At the meeting. Please stand and say pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some.
Revised agenda as presented.
Some.
I'll second.
You got it right, Alyssa?
Sure.
See, that's the way I heard it. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, did we have anybody signed up either online or I didn't see any on the sheet?
I didn't see anyone online.
All right, so. Nobody signed up to address the board. We will go right to hearing visitors. Or excuse me, to student rep reports.
Oh, do we? Yeah, disregard that, that don't part of the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
My fault, that was my bad.
Not wrong.
I take credit for that one.
Noah, how's your day going?
Good, I don't have a lot this week. Boys' basketball is going on to state, so is girls' basketball. So that's kind of fun, exciting. We had a few wrestlers play state. I don't know, I don't, I don't have a lot, so. It's about it.
Short and sweet.
Short week, so.
Are any of the other kids online? Did you happen to, I suppose they would have spoke up if they were.
Oh, swim is going to, or did they play? Oh yeah, they already went to state. Sorry.
Do you have someone just asked to, just has to speak online?
Okay. Make sure they, well, give and spell their name.
I will ask here, so.
And I remember those COVID meetings when we could sit and eat chips. Shut the camera off, run over, get something to drink and run back. Did they change their mind?
I said, I asked to, told them, do you unmute, that you can unmute and speak and. And their name on Zoom is just iPhone, so, and you can tell who it is.
Um, it's Renee Martinez, I did chime in and say I would just add when Deanna speaks about the service animal and our. So I don't need to speak until she's presenting that information.
Okay. So you're good then?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alrighty then, we'll just jump. Oh, what is next? Consent items. Entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I'm making a motion, oh, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
All in favor of approving consent items, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so on discussion items, right off the bat, we jump into the service department discussion.
So, I have several, a couple examples of policy, one says policy, but it's kind of not really a policy, it's more like their guidelines from Grandview. I've talked to. Several schools, talked to handlers. And then today, I found out some information from Grandview about their dog Forest. And they actually, that dog donated from Camp Doodlewood, Camp Doodlewood is in Pasco. And they're dog breeders and they train dogs for therapy dogs and companion animals. So I talked to Tracy, who runs Camp Doodlewood, to find out information, because she has helped districts like Grandview, she's actually donated for us. And she is, will have two dogs in Sunnyside. This all started because Renee, who's, who's here online, Renee, I have permission to share her name. Tacted Matt and I about their dog, which is maybe kind of needs a job right now. And so, these are just some examples, so that you can look at them, there also is some service dog information in there as well. But this is really about a therapy dog that would come and be able to spend some time with students here. I, I learned a lot of information. Renee is working on getting some information and paperwork that we would need, you know, for verification, because they've had their dog for quite a while. But Renee, you want to talk?
Sure, I'll just, I'll just jump in, um. Izzy, my daughter, brought it to my attention that it was something that she wanted to pursue, so I'm just speaking for her, since she's at a conference right now and can't. Be online herself, but. We have a dog Bella, who is from Guide Dogs for the Blind, who came. Who we got for Sophia and. Things have changed and, um. Bella kind of needs a job and. Needs some friends and so, since Bella is from Guide Dogs for the Blind. I think that using her in the school, having her work in the schools or the library, we would like to find a place that she would really be of help. And service to people and so, I am just kind of helping Izzy. Again, that was really her idea and. I think that other people in the district would like to see this happen and I appreciate Deanna's work researching it, so. We would just like to offer the use of Bella and be partners with that and so, I'm waiting on some paperwork. From Guide Dogs for the Blind. About her certifications and. I, I guess anything else that, just kind of a letter that says that yes, we did get her from there and she has. Been through whatever training she needs or something like that, so we would just like to partner, just, we have this resource and. Maybe it's something that we try Bella. Before we enter an arrangement with another breeder or, you know, assume responsibility. For another dog, but maybe try it with Bella and see if it fits the vision of what the district is thinking.
I really appreciate Renee coming forward this, and we've talked about in the past, but it kind of never gained any traction. And so, had the opportunity to have a dog, of course, there's, you know, we would have some policies in place and requirements that, even the dogs. When I talked to Tracy Woods today from Camp Doodlewood, she talked about the certifications dogs need to come into schools and, and that's, a lot of that's in here and some, in some of the policies. As they're evaluated for temperament and all, and all kinds of things. Different districts, she also bought, offered to bring her dog in and to try it out as well. Her dog and she's fully, she goes, I'm fully insured, I take my dog into schools. She, she, of course, trains dogs for schools, because she has dogs in several schools. And she's just starting up a nonprofit, so that she can continue this work, this is her passion, she wants to help schools have dogs. Most, a lot, some districts, you know, have one dog, some have more than one, and there's a lot of different structures of how the dogs are. They, they're all owned by a person, they're not owned by the district. So, a person who in the district would have to take ownership of the dog. And care for the dog, it would be part of that person's family and live with that person, and then they would bring the dog to work. So, these therapy dogs do not work all day, they have to have rest periods and I don't think they have a, like a union, but. They do have to have rest breaks, they don't work seven hours a day, they can't, you know, they, just like any dog, they sleep, you know, you see dogs taking naps and such. And right now, I think Bella's taking a lot of naps, so we're hoping we can wake her up and she can.
Yes.
They, so, at Conceala, in one of their schools, their school resource officer, their school security officer has, is the dog handler. So, there's a lot of flexibility there, so she, she can have the dog around a lot, you know, there's a lot of. Opportunity, because that was one of my questions, like, well, like if a teacher has a dog and that's the handler, then are they just in that teacher's room all day? Well, in some cases, that does happen. The other dog in Seela is actually owned by a person who works in food services. And they have a counselor at their high school trained, and so they, she takes the dog to work every day and she drops him off with the counselor. And that's where he stays in the counseling office. Grandview's, one of Grandview's elementary vice principals has a dog, and that's the dog that was donated by Tracy at Camp Doodlewood. And he lives with his family and he's, he's went through training and, and there would be training that the person that owns the dog would have to be required to. Go through to make sure that the, they are able to handle the dog and there's requirements. And, and then there's other cases where. Like, like the lady from, that's in food service in Seela, she actually lived in, in Alaska and it was, the dog was. A therapy dog in Alaska and she moved and she was like, hey, I've got this dog, he needs a job, basically, he likes to be with kids, so. There's a lot of structure, but ultimately, the dog would be owned by, we probably, if we, if we decided to acquire a dog. Or, or have a dog, it has to be owned by a person, not by us. Because it's a dog that lives with a family and. So, I think there's definitely, if we go that far, people in our district that'd be willing to do that in our schools. And they have amazing ability to calm kids. To help when, you know, feel like you have a friend, if maybe you're not feeling like you have friends. We have calming rooms in several of the schools, it'd be a great place for a student who's maybe having some outbursts of struggles to, or a calming room, so, I, I mean. We, we don't have any of this in place, of course, we would. We would need to do that and if you. I'm, you know, happy to take any questions, I don't know if I can answer them all, but. I've tried to learn a lot about therapy dogs in schools.
Was the dog was hypoallergenic, not me, I'm all in.
Right, they're, they're, you have, you, your best to have a hypoallergenic dog, because they don't shed. And then also for kids with allergies, you have to address those issues if you need, because if there's a student that has allergies, you have to make sure that they're not exposed to the dog. The dogs, you can't even determine, you can't just go out and get a puppy and go, I'm going to make this puppy a service dog. They, they don't get temperament tested till they're eight months old, so they get temperament tested and then they determine if they have the temperament to be a therapy dog. And then there's training, there's training that's like boarding training, you can send them away to like boarding training for like up to three months. Or there's train, there's some training here locally. And Tracy does some of that at Camp Doodlewood, but. The dogs themselves are, if, if the district purchased a dog, they're twenty, they're between, they're about three thousand dollars versus a dog. At least from her, but that's, those aren't the only dogs that are possible, but she does. The Love on a Leash, it's very well-known organization and then again, all of her dogs are American Kennel Cup, it's CGC evaluated for their. Temperament and ability to, to do the job, so. I could, but I'm happy to proceed forward, working on a policy, using some of the guidance here. As well as the forms and requirements that we would have. For a dog, to come in, whether it's a visiting dog, it's, it's the same, whether it's a visiting dog, because technically, it's not our dog. If we had it here anyway, it belonged to someone. She did say the dog that's, that she donated to Grandview that lives with the vice principal from Harriet Thompson. If he leaves, the dog stays and it has to go to a different family. Because she donated, she went to Grandview and she donated the dog to Grand. So, the other dog, one of the dogs that she has at Sunnyside, the first one she donated. Sometimes dogs will go through, like, service animal training and they flunk. But they still.
Career change.
Yes, career change, they take a career change, so they don't, they don't necessarily work out as a service animal, but they're still very well in tune to be a therapy dog, so. I think it's pretty cool.
Do we have any dogs currently in the school with children?
No, okay. No. No, so, so service animals, students, kids that cannot use, they have to be eighteen to get a service animal. We, if we have a person who has like a, needs, has a.
We've been down this path with Sophia to have the dog in school. When she was attending high school and it just personally was too much for me to take on at the time. So, there, I mean, we've started that, but that is different. Where it's a service animal for a person, not a therapy animal for students, for the school per se.
And Grandview's really kind of, I don't know, I want to say, open their doors, but they have. They have, somebody brings their dog on Friday to one room and there's a couple of the people that have a dog, but it's just in their room. I wasn't totally clear if those were really a therapy dog versus a companion animal. But I think there definitely are possibilities and I, I do think our students will benefit from it, I don't know if y'all have dogs, but.
And it might even be, I guess, just hearing what you're saying, that might be a combination of. Using our dog Bella and someone from the Camp Doodlewoods, because their dogs are hypoallergenic. I don't know that Bella would have that. Quality, I, she's a, you know, a yellow lab and I don't think that's one of tho, that level. So maybe Bella with the older students who know that they're allergic and that sort of a thing, or maybe they've outgrown their allergies or something like that, so. I think there's lots of combinations that could be worked, different dogs for different situations or different students.
And, and Tracy bringing her dog would just be to bring it in, so we could see how the dog interacts with the kids, and she, she wouldn't come, she would come down and do it, it's not, she wouldn't come in regularly, whereas. You know, Bella, we might be able to have more, more often, but yeah, I, I didn't realize she wasn't hypoallergenic, but that would mean she did right, what. Couldn't have her run students that might be allergic.
I think, started talking about it, I feel like I just ended up seeing more information in all kinds of school districts with the dogs and I. Love the idea, I think we do need to have a policy in place first, I thought the Seela policy and then with the Grandview policy, maybe work together would really work well for us. If we want to go forward and putting something together and then trying out. Different animals and seeing how it works, I think it's, you know, I think done correctly, it's wonderful.
Well, and this, Grandview's policy was actually written by Tracy Woods from Camp Doodlewood, because I said to her, she goes, well, I don't know if they kept it and I read some parts, she goes, oh yeah, that's my policy. But it does have some more specifics and examples that I thought were good, so I think, yeah, that combination, we don't necessarily need the. Seela has the big part about service animals, which we have too, we could always update that part as well, but. Yeah, I, I think it, it would just take a little bit of work and a little bit of writing and. I'm happy to do that.
Everybody on board?
I think it sounds like a great idea, I'd like to see how it works, you know, I like the kind of experimentation first before we commit. You know, a hundred percent.
Well, and we get the policy in place and then, you know, it's real clear what the expectations and the guidelines are too, so. I, I just want to thank Renee, I appreciate her working with us, been great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Thanks, Renee.
You're welcome, thanks.
All right, so next on the discussion items is KRV and Heights Playground Equipment.
Okay, so, this was put in here because the playground designer was supposed to have the plans to be by yesterday, so they could get out to the packet. He didn't, wasn't able to do that, because the suppliers didn't give him all the information he needed, so. It will come up again, but what he is doing is he's designing for both. Heights and for Riverview, kind of three different cost levels of what he could do. It's amazing what's out there now for playgrounds and then how they can use pieces that maybe aren't as big or as expensive and connect them, so that's almost like. Not as drastic as like American Ninja where, but like kids like have little balance beams to walk between things, so there's. Lots of things, whereas this thing, maybe only two or three kids can play with, but there's a lot of connections, so. He is bringing back three different cost levels for Riverview and for Heights, Heights is areas much smaller. And then, so, I'm, I apologize, it was in there, Selena's like, did you get those? And I'm like, you've been in there, I'll talk about it, but he says no, I'm going to get them on Thursday. So if I get them on Thursday, I'll shoot them to Matt, so he can put them out in the, we got it, so you could just see them and then we could add them to a future recording.
Is there any concern about the playground at Woodstrand having an impact?
No, Woodstrand is, they actually haven't touched a part, there is a couple of things they took out, but they're putting in, they are putting in swings. A swing set out there, that's brand new, I don't think it's probably twenty-five feet high, like the, like the ones that, the one that came out, but. I figured this, that it might come, the other thing is this, the site, the grant cycle's already. Done for this year, but, and talking to the playground consultant, he said that, and he works with. He comes and does the design, but he works with all the state bids, so like KCDA and all that, so he's getting state bid prices for us. So it's not a matter of going, we don't have to go out and find three different people to come up with three different plans, because he's using all state bid contractors. But I said, oh, when we do this, we're going to probably need to do something out at Woodstrand. And then what we're looking at for Heights is just the area that's missing and Jody still would like to bring in something inclusive. And the plant, so there's a couple of different things we can do and I think this will be in part of the plans, they'll put in the structure. And he can design it, we can, the, put in the pass, they can put in the pass, so that if someone was ambulatory and it's not. It's, it's inclusive versus accessible. It is accessible, but really it's inclusive, because it has things that autistic kids would like to play on things, those kinds of things, so. He, he actually shared that he has autistic son and so this was like a big, big thing for him, so. They would put, could put the accessible pass out there, we could also. Hope, like, we could put in the equipment, because the passes are expensive. But we wouldn't do a full surface, but we could then apply, there's a grant that comes out, it's there on a two-year cycle. For, like, I can't remember the name of it, Healthy Kids or something like that, and he goes, we've gotten up to a hundred thousand dollars to do playgrounds, I guess I've done it like ten times. And so it's on a two-year cycle, so we would apply for that September and either maybe use that, if we can get the pass, get all that in now. Use that to put in an inclusive playground at Jody's building, which is much more level and I think would be a little bit easier to do. And maybe add some things out for Kevin as well. So we'll see when I bring it in, I can tell you, Riverview's playground, the three, the three options are going to be between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and. At Heights, it's going to be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars. Kevin's right now.
Kevin gets a swing set.
He is getting a swing set, so that's good, and he, his equipment isn't nearly as old as some of the equipment that was at some of the other schools, but. It is probably similar in age to what was, is at Jody's building. So when those come, we'll kind of get an idea, I think he had some really good ideas, there's some things I looked at and I'm like. That's too tall, too scary, I don't want that, I don't want to fall off that, but anyway, yeah, there's things with like elastic bands and geodomes and all these things, it's. Kind of crazy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so next on the list is the Boys and Girls Club Lease.
We're skipping.
We skipped construction update.
Hey, hey, Andy, this is.
I did, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you hear me, this is Dan.
Yep.
This is Dan, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wanted to piggyback, I wanted to piggyback what Deanna was talking about on the playground with respect to the timeline. There's actually a pretty long duration on the procurement of this equipment, believe it or not, and talking to the guy. Chris Brummett, who's the entity we're, we're working with, basically, you guys would need to make a decision. Within the next month in order to get this equipment ordered and, you know, installed in July. So it's, we're kind of at a time crunch on the playground equipment. I, I don't know if that's even viable for you guys, if he gets the quotes by the end of this week to you, if that gives you enough time to digest where you're at with finances and everything else, but. It would need to be a pretty quick turnaround to issue them a purchase order, so they can start proceeding with the procurement immediately.
Thanks for adding that, Dan, I forgot that part.
Yeah, and I'm sorry I skipped you, the way I read it, I thought the, the playground equipment was a construction update.
No, yeah, that's, that's, that is, that is okay. Uh, because there's actually, there is a couple of different items, I guess, on the agenda pertaining to the, the projects and the construction, so we got the. I notice you guys have the commissioning at the end and then a construction update here, so, I don't know how you'd like me to handle it, would you like me to give you a, I guess like a general update on the elementaries and then cover the commissioning or wait later in the board to cover the commissioning, what would you guys prefer?
Why don't you hit the elementaries now?
Okay. Well, starting, I guess, with the Heights and KRV, I mean, right now, big picture, you know, we're down to Fowler completing the punch lists and the commissioning items. You know, as a whole, all systems are operational, but you know, with that said, there are issues that need to be addressed across the board. You know, all the punch lists have been distributed, we're tracking these issues, you know, as any new issues come up. By the district, which, you know, Jody, I think, just texted me, she probably texted me another item, but joking aside, anything that comes up, we continue to add that to the list. And I want to make a point, because I actually had a, I've had this question come up about warranty several times. We, we're not into warranty, none of your warranties have even started yet and the warranty won't commence until all the contractual obligations are complete. And this might sound kind of funny, but one of the positives to being behind schedule. Is the fact that your warranty period will get extended significantly. With respect, I guess, to the overall schedule. Fowler is trying to do what they can do right now to, you know, work around the school hours and get in there on holidays. But they're targeting getting the remainder of the punch list work complete over spring break, when they can get everybody in there over, you know, a week period. There is one item that will probably, I can tell you for sure, lag out and. It's dependent upon weather as well as the water getting turned on with SVID, but that's the sod over at KRV Playground. And as you guys are aware, that was held up due to, you know, the existing playground having to get demoed and being, you know, deemed non-compliant. Yeah, so with that said, I know it's been a long haul, but I just want to make it clear, no one is walking away, you know, Fowler's not blocking it, finishing anything. It's taking a long time and we are still holding a significant amount of money on the contract, I know we have a warrant request out there for their payoff right now, but even with that. We've got near a million dollars still withheld on their contract, which is significantly more than any remaining scope that they have at either Heights or KRV. Any questions, I guess, on those two, you probably have some specifics, or you want me to cover which and then field questions?
What do you guys think, any questions so far?
How many guys do you have working at each building?
That's, that's variable, depends, so on Monday, I can, I can tell you which was a holiday, right, so they were able to get in there, so they had the roofers, they had the siders, they had the painters, they had the wall covering guy come in. They had, I believe, the flooring company was out there and the plumber got on site and I, I'm possibly missing somebody, but I couldn't give you the exact one, I'd have to go look at the data report. But like I said, it's variable, when, when you get into the point like this. It's tough for them to force the subs to come in and work like two hours, right, because they're trying to get in there at three o'clock when school's out. And they have to pull them, most of them come out of the Tri-Cities and then they get over there and they give them a couple hours to work and it, it's, that's one of the struggles that they're having with getting the subs to get out there.
And there's an issue with the paint at Heights, is it going to be redone? Throughout the building?
There is a lot of paint touch-up that has to happen, yes.
No, I, I'm not talking about touch-up.
What specific?
That, the paint.
What specific issue are you speaking to?
The paint isn't like, there's a mark on the wall, like a kid takes a pen or crayon, it's not like cleanable, you can't like take a cloth and clean it, it takes the paint off the wall. Is that correct, Jody, am I describing that correctly?
Dan, we talked about how to clean the walls. You know, like. And if that, if it's just water or if there needs to be like soap and water.
Yeah, but it's, it's not, if you're cleaning the wall, it's not taking the paint off the wall, correct? I know we, we experienced an issue when the paint.
Oh, we talked about.
There was, there was one instance. Yeah, go ahead, sorry, I.
Oh, you're okay. I don't know if this is the time that Alyssa's talking about. But I know in my own office, you know.
I'm not sure, but.
I don't know, that's the.
I think you and other teachers have said, like, anytime they try to like wipe, wipe the wall, the, the paint comes off the wall, it's clearly, there's like a defect in the paint.
It leaves a mark, like you can see.
Like a wash mark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's weird, it's weird.
So. Yeah, I was aware of some problems early on when they had originally painted and they basically came back and said, well, it hadn't had time to cure, so if we're, if you're still experiencing this, Jody and I, I wasn't aware. If you're washing a wall and.
I haven't checked it, I haven't checked.
Yeah, if you're washing a wall and. This was a long time ago and I know, like I said, they said, okay, well, this is happening within thirty days of us painting or whatever and it didn't have the time to get cured. We will do a test, because absolutely, if that paint is not washable, there is a problem, but. To my knowledge, that is actually not the case, I know there was some problems in the beginning and you, we were wiping a wall and I believe it was, I don't know if it was your speech. And I believe it was, I don't know if it was your speech gal. She wiped her whole wall down, right? And it, it looked like it changed the color. But then we came back later and it all dried out and you wouldn't even know the difference, right? Um, so we'll, we'll go out and we will have the painter come out there. We'll test various rooms and we'll see how the paint's performing. And if it's not performing, we will have them repaint the whole flipping school. Cause a- absolutely, that would not be acceptable. But it, I'm, I'll be very shocked if that's the case.
And then you said you had flooring guys there on Monday. Was that regarding the gym at Heights? Cause there's an issue with the gym.
And what's your question? What's, what's, what, what is, what is the issue there?
The seams don't meet, right, Jody? They're popping up.
I know that, um. I think that that just the same thing that we were talking about, like the. But I don't know.
I think when.
There was, I'm aware of one, one, one or, one or two of the welds, the seams, yeah, had popped. And I don't believe, and this, that's not a consistent across the board. It's not happening everywhere. It's only a couple of locations. Um, and that is on the issues log. I, I can't tell you if that specifically has been addressed yet. And no, 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 to my knowledge, that was not on Monday. So I'll, I'll look and confirm, but it's not like, unless you're starting to see something new that's occurring, Jody, that's not happening across the whole flooring in there. So that's.
I know, I'll have to, yeah, I'll have to go look. I'm sorry, I'm not.
We were, it was you and Matt and Jody and I, we did the walkthrough. We talked about, like, you can see it. I mean, it was empty. You can see where it's popping up. They're not connecting. And then what about the mismatched window panes in the hallway? Okay, is that, is that on the list to address?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
What about the, have you got blinds in every window?
We have blinds in every window.
Yeah, one, one, yeah, with on your, on your actual windows. But the, the thing that's held up is the door, the integral blinds. Sorry, Jody, were you?
No, you, no, no, I'm sorry, Dan. You, you know, the, yeah, go for it.
So the integral blinds on the classroom doors, that's, that is what has been held up. And is, right now, it's on target to show up end of March, so those should go in over spring break. As far as the rest of the classroom blind, I believe those are all, those are all, all installed now.
How's the H-back at River View and at Heights?
I haven't had any complaints.
We'll find out in the next few days. It's gonna be really cool. It's gonna be clear.
My office, but classrooms. Classes are fine.
It's, there is still a balancing issue in your office in the conference room there. Um, but as far as all the rest of the building, everything is fully functional. And I'm not aware of a single failure since the last unit was addressed, which I believe was done over Christmas break, if not right after.
Yes, I have not, I haven't had any complaints.
And Keen, and Keen, there's been maybe one or two issues that have popped up, but their system's been running relatively smoothly since. And we are still, just so you know, we're still working through the actual functional performance testing on those systems. So even though, you know, they are operational and going, we're still working through the kinks on those systems.
Yeah, let's get the paint, get that checked out. I think that's really important, that everything needs to be repainted.
If you think about it, Jody, maybe in the next few days, pick a couple of spots and test them.
Well, I have a, I have a handprint from my house on the wall, and I just keep looking at it going, probably wash that off.
Yeah, cause if it, if it does.
Yeah, we'll get it checked out, like I said, if it, yeah, that's not, absolutely not acceptable, and it's obviously a problem, so.
It is a different kind of paint.
Any other on either Keen or Heights?
Nope, I think we're good. Let's talk about Wintstrand.
Yeah, so I guess you guys had a tour last week. I mean, before, you kind of have seen what's going on. Uh, how was the tour? Do you have specific questions after that or?
No, it looked pretty straightforward to me. It's come a long way since last time I looked at it was probably very end of October.
Yeah, and and I don't know if you have all been in there prior to the demo and the new addition's starting. But I mean, honestly, that place has made a, just a complete transformation, and it's really starting together. I mean, like you saw last Friday. You know, we're into the various finishes stages inside the building. You got ceiling grid going in, casework, painting, MEP trim. You know, outside the building, the siding is going in. Uh, the site work kind of started to kick off this week, but you know, that's obviously weather dependent, so that's gonna be hit or miss as that happens. But, you know, overall, it's, it's still going on schedule. You know, there's things that have been delayed with procurement here and there. But as a whole, it's still, you know, tracking for the July occupancy. So, yeah, things, things are going good out there.
All my brothers and sisters went to school there. All my kids went to school there. And if you didn't know what it looked like.
I went to school.
You went to school there too? Yeah, if you didn't know what it looked like beforehand, it's a, it's a whole new place. It's amazing.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get done first.
It's gonna be awesome.
Little kid around a pool.
Yes. So.
You guys have a bet going or?
We joked about it at the beginning of the year, and like August, like, okay. And I was like, it better not be hot. And I was like, oh, it might be.
It better be Heights.
You just have become very.
Sorry.
Good friends with Ronnie and Ryan. We're just like, hello.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, any questions on?
No, I think we're good. Um, you wanna go ahead and talk about the high school part now?
Sure, sure, yeah. Um, and I've got, I had Ed, I don't know if Ed's on right now, cause I actually can't see who's on the Zoom call. But so he's gonna be on to cover, you know, the final acceptance and, and their letter for questions on that. I assume you got the commissioning report with the board packet, is that correct?
Yes.
All like six hundred pages of it?
It's like. Yeah, exactly. So it's an extremely extensive document. Um, I don't know, would you like me to just basically give you a general, kind of like a walkthrough of the commissioning process and then just take questions from there?
Reader's Digest, please.
Sure, the Reader's Digest. So, you know, basically what commissioning is, it's the verification and, you know, functional performance testing on your mechanical, your plumbing and your electrical system, so your MEP systems. Um, internally, at CSU, we have a group of, you know, professional commissioning agencies, is all they do. They, they come in and they physically inspect your MEP assemblies and, you know, they put the systems under test to basically make sure everything is functioning according to the design. Um, that, you know, even though the functional performance testing does occur at the end of the project, obviously, when everything is, is functioning. The commissioning process really does start during design. So this team has been there from the beginning, starting, you know, with drawing reviews, development of the specifications for the CX on the project. Um, they were here for the entire, pretty much life cycle of the project. Um, and, you know, once the testing actually commenced, kind of towards the end of the construction, you know, we basically spent a year on the functional performance testing on the commissioning. So I guess, just the, the kind of like the general overview of what the process is. Now, any questions, I guess, with specifics to the report or the building, the systems, anything of that nature?
Anybody got anything?
I've got a few, but I'm not gonna lie, I'm only maybe a tenth through this six hundred page document.
Yeah, I made it at least a third.
Every word?
Yeah, it's, it's, if you read it word by word, you're, you're, you're a savant. Yeah, it's, there's a lot to it and there's a lot of technical information. And, uh, but yeah, shoot, if you got some questions, hopefully I can answer them, and if not, I'll follow up with our lead commissioning guy.
Okay, so on page. Well, I don't, I'm not, it's page one hundred and thirty-nine of nine, eight hundred and sixty. It's a constructability review comments form.
Um, yep.
I see there's a.
Go ahead.
Uh, under, there's, there's a bunch of different items that had issues within the high school. Um, but I don't see where. And maybe I'm, there's no date or initials completed by at the bottom of it. So did, did all these items get fully addressed?
So that, this is, that's actually, the CR is what I was talking about, when they come on early during the design side. That's actually design comment that we sent in, you know, initially during, during a design development phase. But I don't know if he attached in this report, if it doesn't have the comments included. The design team, Architects West, as well as their, you know, consultants, whether this pertained to a mechanical item, electrical item. They will have their response that's inputted in that spreadsheet. So what, what page again are you on? I'm pulling it up right now. So, yeah, he doesn't have the comment form on here, so I can, I, what item number?
Uh, what's?
If I can get you this.
Like I said, I've only read about ten percent of this, but, uh.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, I just.
Like I said.
Go ahead.
Architects West did go in there and address all of the comments under the A and E responses. For whatever reason, he put the initial comments on here. He didn't put the final copy of the constructability review on here.
Okay, um. Oh, man, I gotta.
But I can, I can get you that.
There on page two hundred and five of the packet, which I think is a hundred, a hundred and fifteen of this document. Let's see, item ten and item. Well, item ten on that page said it failed. Um, but it does not. I don't know where it says it, and then it says again, pass. So it, did it pass or did it fail? And is it?
Um, sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt you. What, what, if you're looking at the report, what number are you on? Cause I don't think my pages are lining up with your pages.
Um, I'm thinking it's a hundred and fifteen.
One, five?
One, one, five.
And that's on the PDF? And does it say that on the bottom of the PDF?
Yes. It would be. Um. I don't even know what section it's in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost there. Sorry, it's taken a minute, obviously.
It says AHU dash zero one, something energy wheel, constant volume.
Yeah, and what numbers? So you have numbers nine through seventeen, correct, on page one fifteen?
Uh, eight through seventeen.
Yeah, eight through seventeen?
Yeah, so it'd be number ten. It says it failed on, would that be April of twenty-one? But it doesn't say where it was, it just says checked. I don't know if that means it's fixed or.
Yeah, so if he's gone back here and checked this off on on the facility grid report here as a pass, then his back check would confirm that it's complete, exactly. So on the bottom right, it says checked by Stephen Yezz. So the initial failing occurred on the four, seven of twenty-one, and then he came back and did his back check on the system on ten, twenty-five of twenty-two. And then it was passing at that point in time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, then that answers my next, my next bullet point.
Can I ask one?
Yes.
How do we, how do we know that it's passing if it doesn't say that it's passing?
It does say that it's passing. You gotta look at, there's a pass and a fail answer in the center of the report. There's two boxes. You guys see that? There's pass and then there's fail.
Thank you.
Do you, do you see it?
Yes.
And then, so if it was a failure, it was originally identified, and then he goes back in there and basically post his final back check, he's gonna put pass or fail. And we wouldn't be, if it hadn't eventually passed whatever, you know, sequence of operations or design standard. He's not gonna submit this as being complete. And now, with that said, that doesn't mean that everything is gonna work perfectly in your system. I mean, I know that there's a couple of issues right now with AHUs that have come up in the last couple of months. I believe you guys had Apollo out there last week and you're looking to get them on a maintenance contract. And he's contacted me about a couple of questions on your comments, AHUs.
Um, I did find my next set of notes. Um, under, well, this would be. This is that kind of towards the beginning of the document. It doesn't give me a page number. General commissioning requirements. Um.
Yeah.
There is. There's basically a check, uh, a table that has check marks on what type of, it says. I can't, submittals, install checklist, startup, system integration, pre-verification test, functional perform, all that. Um, and I, like I said, I skimmed it, but I, why would we not do a functional performance test on fire, life and safety systems?
That's not perf, that, the fire system functional performance testing is not performed by us. That's separate to the commissioning. So the, uh, the fire control company does the functional performance testing and they work with the fire marshal on that. You wouldn't even get a, you wouldn't get an occupancy permit without having that complete.
Okay.
But it's outside of the commission.
Okay, so the, basically, all the safety stuff is done by not this commission, but fire marshal, stuff like that?
I mean, some of it's LNI, so you have Labor and Industries will come in and check out like your electrical systems, um, some, uh, but yeah, for fire, alarm, fire suppression system. They will be doing the functional testing on that with the fire control. But, you know, the mechanical systems, HVAC, your electrical systems, primary electrical control and the plumbing systems, you know, CIRP pumps, things of that nature, water heaters, temperatures, that, that is the primary, uh, fun, basically, that's the primary commissioning systems.
Okay. And I'm assuming we have all those, right? The functional tests on all the fire, life and safety system.
So. You should have inspection reports, yeah.
Okay.
Um, all this, so I'm, I think I'm on the page running out. So, yeah. The checklist, the ONM manuals, all of the stuff that's listed on here, the balancing report. Uh, some of that's actually included in here, obviously not the ONM manuals. But all of that stuff was turned over to the district and should be on electronic copy. And I don't know. I, I, at the time, I believe Dave was still on board, so I assume it's in the facilities office somewhere. Um, but, you know, we still, there's still copies, so if you guys, uh, don't know where that's at. We can provide you with another one. And I think I heard Brian, and I know Brian.
Work on. A lot of big binders in the office. Um, I don't know the digital.
A lot of what? Sorry, I can't.
It's hard, you're hard to hear Brian.
Yeah, I just, I, I know where the folders, the binders are for the hard copies. I'm not quite sure. I'll have to talk to Sean and the digitals, but I'm sure somebody has that.
Okay. Yeah, you, you should, and if you don't, Brian, let us know. We can get you that, cause it's a lot, it's a lot easier, honestly. I mean, some of the maintenance guys, they don't wanna deal with the electronic stuff, in all honesty. They, they want the physical copies. Um, I don't know about particular who, who, and I know you guys are going through the process of hiring a guy right now. Um, but for me, it's a lot easier just to look electronic on the computer and search for stuff on, on, you know, on a PDF or whatever. So if you don't have that, let us know and we'll get you another copy.
Okay, I've got two more questions and then I'll be done. Um, under specialty systems, it, it included like sprinklers and irrigation. I know for a time I thought that our new system was blowing sprinklers outside, especially in the softball field. Um, has that been resolved?
I, I, the biggest issues I know are in the stadium, cause it's the oldest.
Uh huh.
Um, until that gets replaced, I think we'll continue to have issues. Because till they replace every joint because of the pressure, if the system has had issues. I, I, I was talking to Nate about this, Nate, right, not too long ago. And they could probably give us, give more specific information. They probably have had some issues there too, but that's a lot newer. The, the biggest issues have been in the stadium.
Okay.
Cause it's, let's put it in like this.
But there is a, there is a pressure reducing, yeah, that, there is a pressure reducing valve, though, that can adjust the amount of pressure that's being sent down to the stadium.
Yeah, it's been better.
Has it? Okay. I just saw a lot of. I just saw a lot of big holes in the soft, JV softball field, javelin field, or whatever.
But you're not getting blowout.
Oh, you're talking about the lower softball field. Yes, you're right.
Okay, so you're not getting blowouts up top though, right?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's probably not a question for you. It's probably more for us and as a group, but, um, and then I did.
That pressure, the pressure, sorry to interrupt you, but that pressure valve that I'm talking about is critical to that lower system.
Okay. No, that's, that's, that's all I had. I, thank you. And then I did, and I'm not sure if it's been fixed, but we have had, had leaks in the auxiliary gym. Um, whether it be from snow or the excess rain we get, has that been resolved? I was told it was.
You know, I'm gonna have to ask Brian, uh, Brian, what is the latest on that?
I'm trying to think, we did have another, we did have a leak in the uh. Food service storage area, um, that is, and I know that it leaked since the last time it was quote unquote fixed. Um, but I don't know if that was before or after your, your latest walk through and, and testing, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I am not sure, but uh, I believe, uh, you know, Sherwinell's been pretty responsive, wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
They, I, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think they've. And sorry, what?
I said they have been responsive in trying to come over and help. I just, that's a pretty one. When we're talking about signing off on a building, so.
Yeah, um, and I want, and I do wanna, I do wanna speak to that a little bit. Ed may. Cover that as well, because we, we got two things here. We have the commissioning, right, which is MEP systems. And then we have the final acceptance, which is the other resolution. Um, the roof leak. You do, you will have warranty items, um, that just come up, and that, that's the nature of construction. But what you are approving is. The project as complete by Sherwinell Construction. It doesn't mean that there isn't gonna be a warranty item that they still have to come in and address, or that, you know, this. This basically relieves them from completing some other contractual obligation associated with the warranty. But this says that they have completed, you know, they've completed their contract according to the project documents and, you know, specifications, which is correct. But again, if there's a leak going on, they still have the requirement to come out there and, and address that.
I don't understand how we would have to use our warranty, make a claim if there's a fault now, if it's a construction defect. I don't think the district should have to use our warranty, period. It should be cured before the sign off occurs.
Well, so you, you got it, yeah, and I, I can understand how that would look.
Yeah.
They were substantially complete on the project. A year and a half ago. So if a leak occurs a year and a half after, you're not gonna hold them to. You know, you're not gonna link that to them not completing their contractual obligations, which leaks, leaks happen. You know, they, they installed the roof, they got a roofing warranty, manufacturer warranty, excuse me. Um, they've had multiple inspections done and they, they did everything according to, you know, the manufacturer's recommendations and the drawing and the specifications. It's just, you know, leaks, leaks happen.
There have been a couple.
So that, that's why that is.
There's been a couple of different things.
Leaks that have been an issue since.
Since we got into.
Almost early.
Yeah, definitely. And there's two different things. There's the pre, there's the precast, which was leaking. And then you have a roof TPO leak, and it's the, it's the two different systems. Um, so one was the detailing on the roof termination to the precast. Which they, they have worked on multiple occasions, and I don't believe it's leaking in the gym anymore. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was finally addressed with the ceiling that they completed last year. Is that, is that correct, Brian? Or have you been experience, continuing to experience?
Yeah, he said it was correct.
That's correct. We have not had leaks in the gym.
Okay, so that, that, that was, I think, what you're probably referring to, uh, as far as the, you know, kinda the original issues that you were, were starting to experience, which was. Weird, and I don't know if that was partially related to slight movement in the building, cause we were not seeing those leaks during construction. I mean, we walked out every day and we, we went through an entire winter and we were not experiencing those. So it was kind of an anomaly to start to see that happen the year after. Um, anyway, so yeah, there were those leaks up front that happened, and again, those were, even, even those were post uh. This, the substantial completion date, which is the date contractually that initiates the warranty period. But is that?
So Dan.
Does that, does that answer the, I guess?
I have a quick, I have a question. So the, like, the one, the one year warranty, is that like the work that Sherwinell comes and takes care of? Or whomever?
Yeah, so you, yes.
Different, is there a bigger, like a longer warranty on the roof? Like if you put a roof on your house, you have a warranty for a certain number of years. Is there a longer warranty for the roof?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yes, definitely. So for the, you know, the construction contract, we have the one year workmanship warranty, which is where. Sherwinell and their subs are linked to. Every system, right? And they have that one year they pay for the labor, the material, everything. Above and beyond that, like I said, use the roof as an example, but. You know, your HVAC systems, depending upon what the system is, your water heater, all these, you know, components in your building have a separate manufacturer warranty as well. And the, the duration of the warranty will, you know, vary depending upon what uh item we're talking about. So these two day, yeah, you're not, you haven't been paying for these warranty corrections, just to be clear on that. They've been covering this at their cost, and it's just part of the contractual requirement. But the warranty period, that one year for the Sherwinell warranty, other than the HVAC system, that's still up. That actually expired last summer, cause like I said, we're, we're probably, yeah, we're approximately a year and a half out from their actual substantial completion. And the one year warranty starts at substantial, other than for the HVAC, that's when they complete all of the commissioning. Items associated with the HVAC system, and then the one year kicks on from that point. So you still have coverage on your HVAC warranty.
I think it would be a good idea if we considered or discussed hiring a third party inspector at this point to come in. And evaluate everything. I think it would be worth the cost, and they might see if there's any construction defect. I don't think that we should have to go into our warranty if the construction defect is causing a leak. A brand new roof shouldn't leak. That's a construction defect. That just makes sense. And I would, that's what I would propose as a board. Before we sign off, before we finish, we hire a third party inspector. We have to fi, hire different specialties. I think that's good to do, and examine the roof, examine the HVAC, everything. And they, and let's get their report and see where we're at.
Definitely before the warranties are up.
I mean, that's part of.
Yeah.
Start private construction, we would do that, or it's good practice to do that. So I, I don't disagree, I think.
I think especially that we've already seen leaks at this point.
Well, that could be anything from roofing materials or whatever, but I don't disagree, so.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, I, yeah, and I understand exactly where you're going with that, but I can speak to specifically on the roof and you used the question about it shouldn't leak, it's a new roof. And I've been in construction for, for nineteen years and new roofs leak, period. That's just what it is. I mean, whether there happened to be a random little poke or some type of a flashing detail or something, it's almost impossible to not have a single leak. With that said, I understand where you're at. Ed, are you on here?
I, I am.
Okay. So maybe you can cover a little bit about the talk about the final acceptance and the approach here and everything that's.
Yeah, yeah. So with the, the conversation regarding the, the, the roof warranty or the, the potential for roof leaks and that sort of thing. Um, that's why the, the roofing warranty is longer, and that's also part of the reason that we have one year warranty is. You know, when the contractor finishes the, the, the project and, and the, the district moves in. Then that's when you start using the building, and then that's when things start showing up that, okay, you know, this. You know, there's a seam in the roof that, that uh, that there was a couple of inches that were, that weren't welded properly. So first rain or, you know, first couple of rains, you're gonna, you're gonna find that out. Some of it's a little more, you know, buried where it's, it may be. Further up the wall or something like that. So that's the, the purpose of living in that building and, and going through some seasons. To have these things shake out. Nothing is, is perfect when you, they're in a building, you know, nothing is perfect when it's, when it's completed. And, you know, contrary to popular belief, you don't pay for perfection, you pay for the, you know, the best effort of the industry standard. Which is always what it goes back to of, you know, what the contractor's gonna do. And so really, if you look at it, I think your building has been performing really well. Overall. So that's kinda the, the, where the punch list and the punch list reviews stop, and the warranty period starts. Um, now, if, if you hire a, a, an expert, or whatever you wanna call it, to come in and look at everything. They're not gonna catch everything either. They're not gonna be able to look and see what's in the walls or anything like that. Unless you want them to, to do some destructive testing, which is a little bit probably overkill, unless there are some, some problems that are significant problems. That are manifesting themselves. I will say that, that if you hire an, an expert, they're going to find something. That's their job. That's what they've been hired for, so.
That's, that's your job, yeah.
Then that starts, you know, a, a, a long battle of the experts with the, the contractor and, and uh. And whatever expert you hire, and so unless there's, you know, significant issues, that doesn't seem to be. Um, a, you know, a good way to, to, to spend your resources.
I, I do wanna cut, touch on one item though, which pertains to what um, you were saying about bringing somebody else in. Like I mentioned, Apollo, what is. Working on your future maintenance service agreement, and so he's going into the system. He started, I believe, last week, um, and he's already going through and uh, trying to identify anything that he can see. He's found a couple items. He, I, you know, spoke with him uh, last Thursday. But he, he is already kinda looking as an outside entity, and just, yeah, just to be clear. The mechanical engineer does the punch list, we as C S G does, you know, a separate commissioning process. Internally, the controls guy is already doing his own inside testing. The HVAC is already doing his inside testing before we're even out there. And he's developing his own list. Um, so it's, it goes through many, you know, different hands. It's not just like one group looking and checking everything. You've got entities looking into every electrical engineer, looking at electrical systems, plumbing engineer, et cetera. Um, on the roof, I mean, the, the roofing manufacturer literally has to come out there, inspect the roof. They are, they are, you know, that, that is, they are the expert. It's literally their roof. And it has to buy off on their inspection prior to them even saying, okay, we'll warrant this. So if somebody else is gonna come in and then, by, by all means, I mean, if you wanna do that, you can absolutely do that, like Ed said. But if they're gonna buy off on the system. And that should give you some assurance that the roof was installed correctly. Like you said, that doesn't mean that's, it's perfect, but there will, there will be issues.
Yeah, I have a thought on this. Um, bringing in our own inspector sounds like a really expensive deal to me. My thought on the whole thing is whether it's Fowler or Sherwinell, they depend on their work as their reputation. They're not gonna get jobs if they mess us over. They're gonna stand behind their work. This is the way I feel about it. Sherwinell has an excellent reputation regardless of who you talk to. Um, I don't know what a separate inspection would, would cost, but they. They're gonna inspect these and make sure it's right and stand behind it. That's how I feel.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, they, yeah, and I, I would definitely agree with you. Sherwinell will stand behind your work. So if you were to come to us now and, you know, find something. That, you know, is not compliant, whatever that may be, I'm sure they'll step up and still take care of it.
I would actually add that C S G kinda is our third party. I mean, that's kinda who we hired to take care of the project, so.
We, we, we are, and the commissioning guys that go through the commissioning, you know, they've done hundreds of schools, that's not an exaggeration. Um, they're certified with all the standards that it takes to be a commissioning agent. You know, we've got a mechanical, literal mechanical engineer, we've got HVAC technicians, control technicians that come in, and these are the guys that do it. And uh, if you wanna have somebody else go in and back on top, by all means. Cause even if they've tested these systems, gone through these systems, nothing is ever perfect, right? There's always gonna be something that comes up, or they may even have tested a system and then boom, something happened and the controls reset for a unit. And then everything is now not functioning properly. That, that just, that does happen. Um. But yeah, that is uh, ultimately, obviously, you know, whatever you guys deem is in your best interest, but.
Brian, what do you think? Is there anything in that you?
I think that, excuse me, uh, from my standpoint, it seemed like when we first started encountering the roofing issues, there was some back and forth between. Um, Architects West and Sherwinell over some battle between whose, whose fault this was, who was, is it a design flaw? Is it a construction flaw? Is it the roofer itself? I think that if this. Asked all of you guys, and we now have a determination that this is now on either Sherwinell or whoever installed the roof. And now as part of that warranty, if there are leaks and we're saying that they will fix it as part of the warranty. Uh, that's, my biggest thing is, I don't wanna be left, you know, left in alert here as to who's gonna fix it. Or, you know, if, if everybody's claiming, no, we did it to specifications, this is, this is normal wear and tear.
That's not, yeah.
To me, normal wear and tear does not happen over the course of a year. So if, if we know that we have a warranty in place where we can get our leaks fixed when they occur. Then I, I, to me, that's all that matters, but.
Yeah, and you're right, Brian, and that's not normal, and there was some issues, like I said, with the precast and the detailing there, but they have gone back and done some corrective work. And they, and I also wanna make a point about the warranty. If, if something's occurred in the, you know, that period of time during the warranty. And it was already identified as a previous issue, if two weeks down the road. It starts happening again. It's already been identified, so they're contractually obligated still to come back and address it. Does that, does that make sense?
Uh huh.
It does, yes.
What were you saying?
The cost of bringing someone in to do that.
I can't, I.
It's okay, Dan, this is more for the Ford.
Okay.
And anyway, I mean, there's, there's, we really, we just have to decide how much risk we wanna take and where our money is gonna go. So whether we do that upfront and has it, someone come in and have them fight that battle, we think maybe we can first stop. Or we save that money and use that for any deductibles or some, if it, whether it be insurance or whatever the case may be. There's just, there's so many different things that can go wrong. Um, with that being said, I think we really need the maintenance director position filled. Because that person is gonna be handling all of the, um, you know, tracking of all the maintenance, um, the warranties, the issues. And I think that's where we got lost a little bit with this, is without addressing things and documenting them very well. You don't know if it's warranty or construction or whatnots. And I'm already seeing that, I haven't been here that long. So we really need to document that better, and then going forward, I think we need to do a better job with heights and K R V and wit strand. So we know and we're tracking these within that first year. Like, is this a construction thing or is this a fluke? Like, you know, what is this? And is it ongoing? And when is it fixed? I think with the high school, we just lost it, you know, and it's just randomly coming up now and we don't know. So that's, that's just my two cents, that I think it'd be better money spent taking that risk and going forward. But reaching out, Sherwinell is doing wit strand, so we could always reach out and say, hey, this is not normal. This should have been addressed. And then giving them the benefit of the doubt to either fix it, or whether we go through litigation, or, you know, something like that.
I think as long as things are identified in a timely manner and there's a nice paper trail.
Correct.
That's probably the single biggest thing we need to do, just like Bane.
Dan, Dan, I sent you a text, cause I was trying to think of what Elisa said about the theme, and it really was drawing a blank. And Heather texted, she's like, no, we, we talked to him about this. On January nineteenth, I sent you pictures. It was, and the group text of you, me, Brian, Brian and Deanna. And they have all the pictures.
About the scene? Yeah, yeah, and there's a couple of locations of the scene. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I, I was drawing a blank when you were talking about that, I was like. And Heather texted me, she's like.
Get it together, Jody.
And Amy, just to piggyback what you were saying, um, like I said earlier in the meeting. We haven't started, we haven't started the warranty. We haven't started, we haven't started the warranty periods yet on either, uh, KRV or heights. And until we formally issue them the substantial completion, um, you know, which they have a few basically. Hurdles to jump over before we will do that, we, the warranty period won't even start yet there. But you're right, yeah, you should track those things. We should, uh, have it on a spreadsheet and. Typically, the number one, you know, point of contact and for coordination on that is the facilities man, absolutely.
Right?
I was just gonna say, I, I, I think that we have all tried to do a really good job of documenting. You know, whether that's the school sending pictures to Chervinell, uh, to, to you, Dan. To Architects West, I think that communication did work out very well. And that's probably the most frustrating part about the roof itself is that. Right from the get-go, we knew that there was an issue because of the leaks. And we still haven't, it's frustrating that you fix something and then it moves to another area and fix that area. And it moves to another area. And so I just. I want to be sure that as that moves and as we identify new areas that are problematic. We get, we have the ability to get those fixed under warranty or under the, you know, the construction. Uh, whichever that is, as long as we know we can get that fixed. Uh, and it's not just normal wear and tear, then to me, I feel comfortable.
Sure. Yeah, there's a deficiency, I see. Um. Do you, in the past, I guess, I don't know, say, three months, ha- how many, how many leaks have there been?
One.
One, okay. In the past six months. One, okay.
You know, well, in the past six, so there was, there's been the past six months, two leaks in the food service storage area. In the past year. It, it was not in the food storage, it was in the, the hall, as you walk up the entry stairwell. On the railing, that's where our leaks were. And then. A year and a half since we occupied, we had that same walkway on the balcony as well as the gyms. So it seemed like it started in the gyms and moved its way north.
Once we sign off on this, the roof warranty isn't labor and it's not construction. It's already passed the year, right? I just wanna clarify that. There's the manufacturer's warranty, but after this, there's not, there's actually not a warranty through Chervinell anymore.
Not through Chervinell, but through the, through the roofer, through the roofing manufacturer for fifteen years.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
We could consider just having a third party come in and. Before signing off. It seems like the roof is the biggest problem. Also would be a major expense if we had any issues. It could be. A defect in the material, it could be a defect in design, it could be a defect in installation. And I think we need to find that out, cause if we are out of warranty. Or any of those three parties are pointing fingers at each other and we have a leaking roof, we're paying that bill. And I think it would be worth it to investigate what that cost would be and come back and look at that.
I don't think that there've been any. Getting the, any of the active leaks fixed, right?
Was a question.
No, they, they've all been fixed.
But why is it?
The leaks were fixed, right? They've been fixed as they come up.
I, I, my question is.
He's concerned. I understand what you're concerned with.
Why is a new roof leaking? And I don't buy that a new roof leaks. That makes no sense.
Ed, Ed, you, Ed, you've been doing this. I mean, I've been in it, like I said, nineteen years. Ed, you've been doing it, what, forty years?
I bet, yeah, about forty years. And yeah, a roof, a roof will leak. Even a brand new roof. And the, the brand new roof is when you, it's gotta get rained on to get it, to test it, right? To find out if there are areas where the, again, the seams might not have been perfectly welded. Or if there's an issue with some of the sealant at the, at the coping cap or the, or the termination bar or something.
As we get rain so infrequently. Or we get snow and then it dumps a bunch and melts on a day and a half, I mean.
Or half a day.
Yeah. And we're gonna beat this thing to death on the roof, I think we should. Yeah, I would tend to agree.
Yeah, and I, and hopefully, uh, can I say one last thing on the roof? Yeah, I, yeah. Like I said, your, your warranty technically was up on the, like through Chervinell on the roof, um, last, I believe, August. But I know that they've come out since then, even after that warranty was up. Over that gives, you know, a little bit of assurance, kind of the, you know, see, they're not just gonna, they're not just gonna abandon you guys.
All right, well, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Ed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. Take care.
All right, that runs us to the Boys and Girls Club lease. Now you're up. This'll be a more fun topic than leaky roof.
So, Brian, Brian Deanna and I, um, have worked at constructing a lease agreement. Uh, Lee Marcheseo reviewed it. Um, he did have, he did have some concerns, but. In speaking with him, uh, he said he was confident that. Uh, we could get to a place that complies with state statute as well as, um, meets. Meets the Boys and Girls Club, Club's needs as well as the district's needs. Uh, this is, this is basically a draft, but if there's any feedback, uh, we would like to accept that feedback now. Um, but we've, we've worked hard at trying to expedite the process and get something in front of the board for feedback. Um, in this process, and Brian can speak to it, there are some unique needs, um, around. Uh, honoring, honoring donors' contributions. Um, so. With that, you know, Brian, if you have anything to, to add on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only piece, you know, that, and that was in the cover letter, you saw that. Um, represented as part of that is this, this tension between. Um, the district needing to have this recapture clause as perceived by Foster Garvey. Um, and making sure that donor investment in a building is protected. The donors are giving. For a building to be renovated to function as Boys and Girls Club, right? And so there's that tension between those two. I think a critical note from Foster Garvey as it pertains to that was concerns around. A clause that was put in there that prohibited recapture for a ten-year period. And so that was the primary piece of, in conversations I had today, Matt, and sorry for a curveball on this, we're comfortable removing that. Um, I think by having the recapture credit in there, that, that protects that donor investment. We can remove that. And I think that addresses most of Foster Garvey's concerns.
Yeah, yeah, like, uh, like Lee said, he was confident that we could get, and we're close as is. He was confident that we could get to a place that, uh, met the Boys and Girls Club needs as well as aligned with the state statute. Um, so thi- this was kind of a draft for feedback purposes. If there's any feedback and anything you would like for us to kind of visit about or revisit, Brian, uh, Brian, Deanna and I. As we go forward and, um, have a full lease agreement drafted.
Okay, I had a question, Matt.
Yeah.
I didn't, I couldn't quite comprehend in my head the percentage of payback if we had to take the building back. They seem so high.
Yeah.
If you do work in a building, it's gonna depreciate as you're using it.
Yeah.
Where did these high percentages come?
Yeah, so part, part of that agreement was, and I can speak to this, and Brian, you can add in. Part of that was that if the Boys and Girls Club is kicked out of this facility, that they won't have any place really to go. And so where they've had conversations and entertained conversations about. Procuring land and ge- getting land to build their own club. Uh, that money will go into the school as an investment in that property. And then if it doesn't work out, the Boys and Girls Club is kind of left high and dry with no money to, no money to really. Build a club, have a club, anything like that, because when, when they've committed to us, they vacated the city's property. And we don't know what the city's gonna do with their current space. We do know that the Boys and Girls Club has outgrown that, and if Prosser continues to grow. Then they'll outgrow, you know, they're in the white church as well, but continue to outgrow facilities. So. That's where that kind of came from, that they're not left high and dry. Um, that if, if the, we do sever at some point, that they're left with enough money in the pocket. That they can go and get land or rent a club or something like that. They don't have to shut their doors.
The other idea was that, um, property's not losing value, even though the building itself might be. You know, old, like, you know, it gets, every building gets older, you know, every, every day, but. The land and the property itself isn't gonna become less valuable now than it is in twenty-five years. So that's, that's the other thing we talked about, Brian.
Yeah. I think there's a bit of a tension here, I, I think between the way property is booked on a balance sheet. Um, which usually depreciates. And what do you guys use in the district for depreciation for capital structures? You don't depreciate, okay. So never mind, that eliminates that whole piece. So I guess we don't depreciate in Prosser School District, so it protects that investment. There's also, you know, time value of money that comes in the equation. So what you don't see here is an increase in that cost. Where the renovations that the club would be making to that space, ten years from now, those renovations would be, would cost more, right? So what we're doing is we're equalling that playing field for a period of time to protect that donor investment. So that if there was a recapture exercised by the school district, that would be reimbursed to the club in order to get, build, acquire new facilities. But then it does take into account over time that obviously that's gonna, uh, come down a little bit, and that's where you see the eighty-five percent and the seventy percent.
I thought eighty-five percent was pretty high after twenty years.
Thirty. So if you were to take that and do the, the renovations we're talking about to bring it to like-new condition, twenty years from now, that will be, you know. You can do your math based on construction costs you've seen, but it'll be a lot more. So there's a tension between. The way typically, uh, depreciation happens on a balance sheet and the cost of renovations put into place and what that would be a replacement cost on in the future. Think that kind of from a home insurance perspective, typically, most of your home insurance is probably replacement cost. Because it acknowledges the fact that to replace that structure is gonna go up. We didn't factor that in here. We're not trying to, to factor that in. We're trying to protect that initial donor investment.
I completely agree that, uh, there needs to be a substantial buyback to make. This board or future boards really think about what they're doing if for some reason they decide they need that space again. And I, I remember talking with you about this a few weeks ago, that I thought that was very important. But the percentages are there, you know, when you're looking at forty, fifty years down the road. We're basically saddling, I mean, I might not even be here in forty years.
Sure.
To be honest, um, while not here, here, I mean. Breathing, but we're, we're saddling future boards with potentially still enormous debt.
Okay, what would be your comfort level thinking of years of protecting that donor investment?
Well, I would say somewhere probably when you come into forty-five or fifty or zero.
Okay, so it sounds like we're pretty comfortable with the initial lease term, well, actually. Based on the elimination of that ten years, which I think is, uh, makes sense. So you're talking about the first twenty years of that, everybody's pretty comfortable there. Um, and then the, the following, uh, two renewal periods, ten years, it sounds like there's comfort. We just probably need to put and, uh, update that expiration date and extend that out further. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I know what, what.
Sorry.
I was gonna say what I had scribbled down and I had got my little flip phone out and I went through a few scenarios.
Sure.
If you just drop twenty-five percent a year, at fifty years, you're zero balance.
Got it.
At forty years, twenty.
So basically zero it out over a period of time.
With, but by, by the time we get to zero, all the upgrades that you guys do in the next few years are gonna be as old as they are right now and just as worthless.
So, so keeping, you know, the, the, it'll, it'll be revised because of the ten-year clause you see represented there in that lease piece, but. Um, basically what it would look like is protecting that investment for that first twenty years, looking at decreases, but then at some point having it zero out. So that the school board is not in a situation fifty years from now of recapturing that building and having there be.
But I don't think anybody wants to. No, no, that's not.
Understand.
None of us have any intention.
But we also don't see the future.
Exactly.
Yep, I hear ya. And so, um, I can go back and play with that a little bit. And so just give me some, if you could give guidance so that we can. Efficiently get you back. What I'm kind of hearing is maybe between that thirty and fifty-year period, make sure that we account for that. Um, so that, that there's not a problem in twenty-eighty.
I, I would ask, is it of interest to the board for us to come up with some sort of formula?
You, you could even do, you know, ten percent a year, you know, over.
Following that thirty type.
Following that, that.
Yeah. Because what, what he was saying about adjusting for inflation and things like that. I mean, there, there's a lot of room here and a lot of possibilities. Like I said, we're close, but we just need to know. Like, from, from this, where do we go and what are the, what are the points that the board would like to see change, if any?
That's my only problem.
So we can, I can go back and visit, you know, um. I, uh. Donors that I've connected with on this that have put substantial dollars towards this.
Well, I don't disagree.
Um, have a concern if a recapture takes place and there's no, um, recapture credit. That is of concern, but I also hear where you're coming from, that to a certain extent, the way this reads is an indefinite period, which is a little too long, right? So let me, let me go back and we can try to honor that donor investment, but also make sure that the district. Um, has some type of end in sight, um, on that and see if we can find a way to meet in the middle. I can absolutely have that conversation. And I think my preference is that's not a big enough stumbling block, in my opinion, to prevent us from drafting the lease to bring to you for approval. So we'll continue this conversation here for a little bit, but what I'm also looking for tonight, see how close we are. Cause if we're close enough, right? Then we can go ahead and engage an attorney to draft that lease and bring you the lease for approval. And, and honor those pieces, right? And so let's, let's continue this conversation, but I see where you're coming from. I need to balance that with the tension of donor investment, but I, I think we can get to a middle ground that'll work on that.
Yeah, like, like I said a few weeks ago, you had, you absolutely need to be compensated if for some reason we have to take it back. But I don't, the way it reads, it goes into, you know, fortuitous yet.
Yeah.
Sixty-five percent or whatever it was.
Are there any other sticking points?
Yeah. I, I think under that one point one three section that we received from Garvey Foster. Uh, the second paragraph underneath that where he said that, um, the law prohibits us from donating. The, uh, donating, uh, dollars, but he went on to say that, um. Uh, we just need to, uh, find a way to, um. There should be a defensible valuation of the improvements in the, in the lease agreement. For example, under a reasonable. I don't have, uh, reasonable, uh, asset depreciation value methodology. And then he also said. That his people, their people would be very happy to work with your people. Um, on how to word that language so that we can make that happen. So I mean, I think it really sounds like that might be the way to make it work. Yeah. We just can't gi- give you the dollars, but we can't figure out a way to make this happen.
Sure. And like I said, uh, Lee was confident that we could, we could find. Language that would align with state statute as well as meet both of our needs. But the, the feedback I took as it needs a little bit more finessing from you. Of course, those things will be discussion points that Brian and I.
And, and we can absolutely, you know, I, I, did they get my responses to those or just the? That's okay. And so, um, you know, I think that's an easy one to work through. Um, gifting of public funds is not going to be an issue here, um, as it's a, a lease arrangement. Um, and then additionally, if you calculate the cost and value of services rendered to the youth of Prosser. It easily accounts for any concerns over gifting of public funds. So, um, this is done with Boys and Girls Clubs, school districts and cities and counties across the state. Um, without any challenges, um, because of the value of services rendered as well. And so between. Protecting the building itself, we're only talking about a recapture credit for the actual capital improvements, as we will document. From the Boys and Girls Club, as, and services rendered, there are zero concerns that I have. Or variety of district, cities and counties across the state, um, in a gifting of public fund scenario.
Great.
Value should be marked, like whatever is market. You know, like the, the standard rate of depreciation. I know, I know that's a different.
Yeah.
Can't like, you don't, you don't start depreciation thirty years later, you start right away. So even though, you know, you don't have that same model, but. That should be applied. So whatever you guys are using on your book.
Sure, that is a disagree.
Should align with the district.
And that is where I do disagree with Foster Garvin. We'll have to go back and have conversations. I do not believe in a situation like this, that the asset depreciation value methodology applies, because it's an accounting tool. Um, that is, is used for accounting purposes. It is not necessarily an assignment of practical and real value. As it pertains to construction and how it increases over time. Of practical and real value as it pertains to construction and how it increases over time. So I I do disagree with that. It's an accounting principle. Um, but I do not think it is a tool that is helpful in protecting donor investment from private sources into a public building.
So figured out, was there any more comments, questions?
Yeah, I do have, um, I'm not gonna rehash the percentage recapture, but one thing I did. On the the lease term is twenty years.
Yep.
Um. One of the things I had or a question or maybe even a concern is um. There's an option for two five year renewals.
Yep.
But there is no um, there is no language for the district, whether or not we want, if we didn't want to extend the lease. After the initial twenty years. Not to say that.
Sure.
I would support not doing that.
Right.
Again, we're we're talking about a contract that's gonna outlive. Everybody in this room.
Right.
Probably. I don't wanna tie future boards up in into not being able to get out of this. Other than you guys getting out of it.
And the mechanism for that is a three hundred and sixty five day notice for recapture.
Well, I think I think the way. The way he's wording it is, there is a way to get out of it, so we write the check via whatever percentage. So you know, if if there's a, if 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 it's still a hundred percent buyback at twenty years.
But no, I understand that, but I know in some of your other contracts with the Boys and Girls Club. You actually had lease terms, right? Then you had to renegotiate the.
Sure.
And the next set of leases.
Yep.
We don't have that.
So and let me use City of Pasco as an example.
Yeah.
Right? And so that is a twenty year lease that expired that we're we're renewing, right? Um, I think the difference on that is that when we began operating that club in partnership with the City of Pasco, also. A school district building, it was the old Emerson Elementary School. When we started doing that work, in addition to us offering those services, the city made the capital improvements to bring that building up to code. And then invested ten years of CDBG resources to improve that building. The difference here is who is improving the structure. And so that makes it a little different than than the City of Pasco one because of a substantial capital.
I get, I I I understand that part, but it it just seems to me like any lease agreement, you know. Should have a way, we should be able to get out, you know, if it's only, if it's, if it's twenty year term.
Uh huh.
And we, then it's a twenty year term, but how do you have a twenty year term plus two five? So we got thirty.
Yep, correct.
Right? Um. And then after that, we've got, we renegotiate, right?
Following that thirty year?
Yeah.
Correct. Following the two extensions.
Uh huh. But if, you know, and I think, and I, and like I said, I'm not trying to hold this up.
No, 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 you're on your job.
But I do think it's, we should have some language that, you know, at the end of twenty years or thirty years. You know, that either it goes on into renegotiations. Or, you know, we've got a way to take it back.
Openers on specific issues, that's what we do with union contracts.
I don't.
Is it there's, there is certainly so like. Benefit salaries and so there are a certain number of issues that we renegotiate.
Well, I don't know if we need to go that far. I mean, the contract's pretty simple.
They might want to stay too.
Yeah.
Or they can, you know, they.
I would like to stay.
Yeah, they might say that there's certain issues that they want to address as well. And so, and typically it's uh like in, or union negotiation is, we'll talk about these two issues. And then both parties can bring one one other issue um to discuss at the table.
Yeah, that was just.
Touch it, but there could be specific issues that you address that time.
Yeah, maybe you want us to take care of janitorial by twenty fifty.
Or, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Sure, and I I think, yeah, so.
Flowers on my mark in fifteen years.
I think we can all understand the intent on what we're trying to accomplish. That would, that would be a proposed change. What would you recommend?
I don't know, that was just, there was two items that I saw and everything that it was fine. It was the lease term.
Okay.
With the the extension only allows you to extend it.
Okay.
Um. Or the Boys and Girls Club, I should say, and then the percentages were the only two questions I had. The rest I thought was fine.
And let me read, sorry, I'm catch up a little bit. Cause I think that I addressed a piece of that. In the Foster Garvey response, and let me just catch up on that. I think that was lead, oh, got it, yeah. It, one of the things Foster Garvey recommends, which may help you feel better, is that default clause, termination for default. And so that makes total sense to to add that clause back in. Um, as long as it's limited to issues of gross negligence, right? And so, but no, that may help you feel comfortable with that if there's a. A termination clause in there.
Maybe that's what I'm looking for.
So. Yeah, and so the reference they gave on that was district retains the right to terminate the lease if Boys and Girls Club defaults under our lease, right? For example, undertaking illegal activities, failing to provide agreed upon services, so on so forth. So that is an additional protection that Foster Garvey recommended for the district, which makes a lot of sense. Cause just like our donors are wanting to give for a specific purpose, you're wanting your building to be used for a specific purpose. By a credible partner, right? And so having that added in.
Solve my problem. But I, like I said, I'm good with the entire contract except for those two things.
Yeah.
Um, I'm good going forward.
Okay. We'll work at you and um. Have a finalized agreement brought back to the board. Ready to be done.
We're excited to get a, you know, we just talked about architects and engineers, but get architects and engineers in their design, so.
Yeah.
Two weeks from tonight.
We know that you have a vision, a vision for it. We know it'll be beneficial for our kids too.
You were gonna be proud of this building. Um, you are not gonna have to deal with any warranty work, all of that on your behalf. And so and I'll even handle the punch list.
Sounds good.
Any other pieces of feedback? Otherwise, it sounds like we're really close. We're really excited. Um, I think we can resolve these pieces. Um, are you comfortable seeing the next copy? Do you still wanna see it in these draft? Terms or do you want us to bring a lease back?
I'd like.
Or potential approval?
I think we're close enough, we could probably see a lease.
Awesome.
I'm gonna ask all board members if you have issues and make your notes, get them to. Get them to Matt of the lawyers, work it out. You know, if we have a line in the sand, let's get it mentioned and move forward.
Cool.
Hey, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, it's gonna be great. Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, next to safety and security.
So I don't know if if Glenn is on here. We had a safety and security meeting scheduled. We rolled that into this meeting. But these are more budgetary than anything else. And so as we start to talk about our safety and security program and expanding it. Or things that we think are necessary, uh, there were a couple pieces that we talked about that are that are budgetary items that will need money. We will need to put money behind. One of them was single point of entry at HMS. Um, cameras in the courtyard and uh I'll call it just uh. Securing the courtyard. Uh, one of the interesting things about our new buildings is that our old buildings used to have motion sensors and detectors. Uh, our new buildings, uh, like the high school doesn't. So there aren't alarms that go off if there's an intruder. Um, so cameras in the court, securing the courtyard area. We talked about a generator out of Wood Strand. This is outside of. Kind of what um Architects West and uh we had planned for out there. Uh, and then Glenn was gonna talk about emergency response plans, but those three items. Uh, will be budgetary items that we need to account for if we still want. Um, I think that. Single point of entry at HMS is probably uh the highest priority. Um. Uh, Jody can, you know, she wants to talk about uh just different pieces at heights. But um, yeah, securing the courtyards, I think is is important. Um, and then, of course, the generator was kind of a emergency prep thing. Uh, we had. Power outages at Wood Strand, and as a result of that, we were having to drive students in to use restrooms in town. And um, we've had some interesting things take place out there. So. We had talked one time about having a larger generator here. And we do have one at at Housel that we worked at repairing, but if there's ever a citywide emergency. Um, we've talked, you know, talked about the need for that. Um, at one time, we even talked about one of those big semi trailer generators, purchasing one of those. Um, as a district, just in case there was ever any need. The city of Prosser, the city of Prosser was ever in need um because of something catastrophic that that would be a resource. Um, the issue with that is is that, you know, there's maintenance and upkeep on those and they're pretty expensive. So um, you know, the question is, is that the best use of resources? Uh, or is it better used to spend it on kids or something else? So. Those are just discussion points that if you have any feedback or.
And over the years, we've talked about the single, single point of entry at Housel, and it's been sketched out a couple times and. Other things.
I have it.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's.
It will actually wouldn't be that hard to create a single point of entry there just because of the way, the, I mean, of course, everything.
Costs money.
But it it definitely is possible there because of just how things are set up.
And then just the other thing that I could speak to, I know. When people start planning, planners love to plan, so a just single generator, simple idea turns into, you know, forty thousand dollars. Uh, literally for like two grand, we could buy a propane powered generator enough to run the well. And I mean, if it's too cold to keep them there, you're gonna send them home anyway, but at least that way Wood Strand it have water and.
Yeah, even with generators, unless it's a really big one, all it does is run what's essential, the light in every room, enough to do like. Save the servers. It's not running this, you can't run the school. And at the middle school, even that huge generator. Runs the like the gyms and the office, like it doesn't run the whole school. It's enough to be the gyms for evacuation and all of that. It doesn't. It won't run the whole school, even and it's huge.
I I know at my place, I have a a ten thousand watt propane setup. That's all it's for.
Yeah.
I can run my mini split and.
Your essential stuff, yeah.
The middle school is a designated community emergency response.
And that's why it's there. But it's ver- it's hu- it's very big, it's very loud, and so, but it it really would only run those those areas. But you, I mean, it would keep it warm and keep the lights on for um whatever needs, and that was put in because of the hospital.
I thought it was the uh.
It was a grant, but it was really because it would be um an emergency evacuation site for the hospital if they ever had to evacuate patients. Um, and we did, you know, yeah, we used to the whole Yamato thing, but now those are all, I think it's.
Did we get both of them running or just the one?
Uh, no, Brian Aber got the generator. We hired uh Western States to come out and repair them.
The both of them run then?
Yep.
Well, hopefully they're, they're supposed to, it's supposed to be tested every month, I think, because of diesel.
The one out of PUD, they started up the first Monday of every month.
Yeah, they're supposed to be.
Well, we have a maintenance strike, we'll make sure that they're.
Well, I would like to see just uh if we can get cost estimates for the single point entry, cause I think that can start. You know, we need to start having those discussions. Um, you know, whatever the cameras that you want. You know, as long as we have dollars to, then we can start. You know, we can make, start making decisions, you know, West Strand generator, I think is important. Um, just to get enough going to get them out or take care of.
Even if it's just twenty five hundred bucks enough to run the well, I mean, it's gonna be daytime if they're there anyway.
It has to be all the bathroom.
That's.
I'd like to see prices and then we can kind of move forward. I don't know how the emergency response plan does. I don't think it costs money except for printing and. Um, initiating, but.
All right, so get estimates and then we can decide where those fit within our budget.
Right.
Or rank them.
Mm hmm.
Thank you, West Strand generator. I just asked my question.
What was the estimate? Do you remember?
Gosh, I wouldn't say.
Fifteen. Fifteen to twenty, he said.
No, I think it's fifty.
Fifteen to twenty. I'm, I I remember numbers for you. I'll bet you.
You you can buy, you can buy a really nice Generac for, you know, five grand, runs on propane.
Well, but the it's a, the. Not the connection, so that would all be put in, and that was part of what he was talking about.
Well, what I'm talking about is is literally a manual cutoff the well from everything else, start it. So it's on propane, so the fuel never goes bad and you have water.
Is this something we're trying to fit into the budget like?
Yeah, like yesterday.
Just curious.
There are different options there. We've talked about doing a tech and security levy. And so a tech levy and security levy would pay for like cameras or. Only pay for hardware, can't pay for personnel.
Right.
So that's a piece that um if we ran that, the other piece is that Prosser has. Prosser's never really done long range financial planning. And so as a byproduct of that, it's, you know, spend what you have and then. Um, yeah, you you don't ever have the money to do any projects and upgrade and update, so. Um, we've talked about lots of stuff from sprinklers to. Um, you know, safety and security stuff, so I think part of that is planning and. We start having discussions around budgeting, it's, you know, what's the extra? And what are the priorities here, you know, tackle one a year or two a year until we get to a spot where we're comfortable.
Something I think next.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, the the Housel was well, well above a hundred thousand was the estimate for that, to redo the front.
We had three of them that we were gonna do, redo all elementaries and the board had slated two hundred fifty K.
Right, that's what it was.
Um. In that, we made the decision in that year to pay for security guards instead of single point.
That's right.
We'll work on getting you.
All right. Do anything else anybody want to say about that? Okay, so that brings us to the Patterson proposal.
Yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent sure why we're still beaten on this. Um. Do they have a lawyer involved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I believe they actually worked through Foster Garvey as well.
Okay.
Um.
I'm actually gonna suggest that we just, the five of us uh communicate with Matt what our. Line in the sand is on this and have the lawyers.
So they, so I spoke, no, that, just to frame it for you. Um, last time we discussed this, um, we wanted to have our legal counsel review it. And he, there were two pieces that he identified. And one was um. The, the financial language about how they would pay it. And so his big thing was, if you want it paid in a certain way, state that it was, state that it's paid in a certain way. Now, the way that the contract's written now is that um. We would have to go out for bid and basically have money to pay for a project. We'd have to go into debt. Before Patterson would even begin to pay us.
Good.
And so we'd have to decide on a project, go out to bid, pay for the project, and then that would trigger payments from them. Uh, whether that is in a lump sum or whether that is, you know, fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, which if we go into debt, fifty thousand dollars a year over ten years. Um, you know, we can, we can help put money behind that, but we're going into that, it's our district. And we're paying interest on that as well. So um, that was his first piece about pick one and, you know, pick how you want the segments. And uh, what's kind of beneficial for the district that the district intends to do a project? Um, or redo the landscaping at Art Fiker. And then the other one was the three point one B. That we had talked about, and he said you might want to include some language like, like this, uh, kind of some stock language. But that's what, um, yeah, just bringing it back to the board. Um, there, I spoke with their superintendent just briefly today. And uh, he said, hey, just circle back around, where are we at with that? Um. So I would like to get it to a point where we can agree upon it. I think that we continue to hear about. Projects that need to be done, specifically Art Fiker. Uh, whether it's the track, whether it's the the weeds, whether it's all those different things, whether it's the ADA accessibility. But at the end of the day, we need to find out where that money's gonna come from. Um, you know, how how will we make that? You know, how, how will we make that dream a reality? And so, um, I think that that's, you know, the Patterson contribution is a start. We can even match it and put money behind it ourselves and really maximize that contribution.
Well, the whole, uh, ten payments of fifty thousand. I mean, I understand money's money, but at the same time, it's. You know, this year it's gonna buy us some shrubs and by year ten, it's gonna buy us a shrub. You know, I mean. If they're a little more flexible and I, I don't, I'm not gonna beat them up over, you know, one four hundred fifty thousand dollar payment, they're a small district. I get it. Ten payments just doesn't seem. Seems kind of ridiculous. I would say probably something more like one of four fifty, two of five or, uh, two of two fifty. Or maybe three of two hundred, something like that.
I think we need to quit giving options. And I would just go with A and say, this is it. You know, and however we wanna structure the payment, you know, maybe. Do item A, but th- when, you know, thirty days or at commencement or something, you know, change that. That term amount, but, I mean, I've looked at this for a year and a half and I know you guys have looked at it longer and I'm already tired of looking at it. I think we should just do item A, do the one lump sum and just kind of be done with it, that's.
With the project we wanna do and get the money from them.
I think we discussed that they had, they received built money in excess of that anyway. Which is kind of what they wanted to use, I think, wasn't it? Which I'm not opposed to, as long as it's one payment.
And who drafted the agreement?
Uh, they did, they, uh, I believe they worked with Foster Garvey. If not, I think it was Stevens' client.
It almost, it reads dated, you know, two point four, Prosser intends to modernize Prosser High School, okay, so we did that. And it's athletic field, so they're not gonna be contributing anything to the actual high school, it would be athletic fields project. Or something else related to the school, is that right?
True.
That's the project.
Yeah, it, it does have to happen on this campus. And so, their contribution was supposed to go into brick and mortar. And we talked and talked and talked and talked and talked and talked. And pretty soon the high school was completed without ever striking a deal. So where, where it really kind of got life is that we said. The high school's been completed, but we know that Patterson. Is really passionate about Prosser and Prosser Athletics. And it was their, actual their contribution during Herb Berg's superintendency that built Art Fiker. So they said, yeah, we would be down with trying to contribute again because Art Fiker is technically on campus, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to see what projects. Will fit in this scope and we can afford to do like.
Whether it's ADA bathroom or a new ADA ramp or resurface the track or. Redo a fifty year old sprinkler system.
Probably not enough to do all of it, any, maybe, I mean, maybe some things that would.
Oh, there's some.
It, it, it will do something. And so, I think in the eyes of the community, that's important. To show the community action and when that, we get momentum. Then we can talk about, you know, other options. If it's capital projects levy, if it's a phased, uh, phased construction project over time. It just provides us possibilities and show, shows that we're making progress and then we have traction on it.
But if they can make a one time payment, they have the money.
Absolutely, we can find something to spend it on.
And is it tr- the track surface is a, is a high need project, is that?
It'd be a lot more than half a million.
It, it probably would, but just re-surfacing the track, it's quite closer than redoing.
And we have to match, is that correct?
There's no statement, we'd have to match it with our own.
We'd have to fill whatever gap is missing, how many projects we do.
Yeah, out of cash reserves.
And I know the community's probably not ready for a capital levy, but if we were to go to that rate with a very, very low rate, like the lowest rate. Necessary to make it worth it. And use that like for the tennis, so if we do capital levy, we can include some of those other security things, technology. Uh, the tennis court, some of those other things, but the portion of it that would be for the stadium. Could then like, you know, the four hundred fifty thousand could come from Patterson and maybe another hundred or two hundred thousand as a capital levy. Doesn't have to be a, a large rate, it can be, you know, the small.
Twenty five cents.
Yeah, twenty five cents, fifteen cents maybe.
I think any conversation about a levy or a bond is not ideal right now. I think we saw the city, um, hall bond fail at a very high rate. Um, I think having a discussion about it is just gonna lead to a discussion out that in the community tomorrow and rightly so. So I think we need to focus on small projects at a time, right now the community is paying. You know, a big bond off for the schools, um, and we do have to pass a levy to just. Make maintenance and operation next February and I want to make sure that. The information is not confusing and it's clear.
Well, based on this contract, we have to be doing a capital project to get the money.
Correct, yeah.
So this has been two years, maybe?
More, more.
More, and in that time, we trend doubled in construction costs.
Yeah.
It's gonna be interesting to see what, what it actually will cover when you go to, to get those es- estimates, knowing that. A playground at one school is two hundred fifty thousand.
Even the greenhouses out here were like a hundred and something a piece.
Well, so when you do, just like all the projects, when you do a design bid build. We would have to front all the money. So if an architect's involved in the design, we pay that money. In the bid process, we have, we go out to bid, we pay that money. And so, they start the construction, everything else, we go into debt. Right, and so that's the, that's where that language kind of ties us up a little bit. Is that we do have to front the capital and so that's a hit to the cash reserves. Initially, right, like that's out of pocket. And then they have the option to pay it, you know, perhaps pay it back over time. Is, is there an expiration? Offer meaning or agreement meaning if we do not go into that, that can start a capital project, then that money expires?
Right, like I'm wondering like, if, can the contract mean that if we. If we pick front the money to design the project and have the cost, then they pay versus us going into debt to get the money? Doesn't make sense. Like I. I don't know, I feel like it, it's. Putting more hamstrings in there than, or challenges in there, like if we said we're going to do the stadium. We get the estimate, do all that, like we're committed, sign the contract, we know how much it is. Do we have to go into the debt to, that's the thing in here, I'm like, we have the project and they know what we're gonna spend it on, do we have?
We can make a.
Because they have that in a capital account right now. But don't you only get built money if you have debt?
Yeah, my, my concern would be, are we ever going to see the money? Because that is, it's never a good time to go into debt.
They haven't paid it for a long time.
So my.
Think it's written up that if we start a project connected to that, they have to start. In thirty days, wasn't it written up?
Sixty. My question, Amy, can we actually make, create a whole new, like, Art Fiker Stadium Fund? And then what I would rather have instead of, well, I think we're all probably on the same page now, but. Put it into that fund and it can sit there until we can get the projects going and.
So we can, um, we can track our revenue, so this, I actually just learned something today. We're not using, um, our G, our general ledger codes, um, for restricted funds. To the potential that we could. So right now, everything's kind of in two, two buckets, like restricted and non-restricted. But there's some actual like from levies, from bonds, from like the different sources, um, in our capital projects fund as well as. And so, my plan is over the next year to get that corrected, so we can actually see where those revenues and expenses are. From the different sources, um, and so it's like the, the stadium, we can have a project tied to that, see what revenues associated with it. And what expenses associated with it, at any time, we can kind of see where we are. And then usually we're not tapping into one, granted, it's the same, it's the same overall bank account. But we are allocating it to those different sources, so we absolutely can do that, it won't be a separate account, it's just.
Yeah, it's a separate line in. Maybe we can do that, tell them it's a one time payment and we'll just stick it in that Art Fiker Stadium.
I thought, I, I thought it read we actually have to start a project before they have to make payment.
It did.
Yeah.
Based on.
Matt, I have a question. How, how did it get determined that they got to decide? How they got to pay us the money that they owed us? How was that determined? I mean, they, they owed us the money because of the non-high requirement. Uh, so how was it determined that they got to decide, dictate to us? How that money was going to flow to us?
Yeah, it's a, this was a ongoing, well, you've been a part of this, this has been an ongoing discussion where. Really, the reality of it was that there was a formula and their tax base was supposed to pay us through. It was in thousands of dollars and they said, this is not coming out of COVID, this is not a time where our tax base would pass anything. And so, we, if they didn't, we could consolidate them, right?
Right, I understand that process.
We didn't ever want to do, you know, really have that conversation or entertain that conversation. So they said, we could rather incur the debt as a district, rather than go to our tax base and have our tax base. Try and pass a capital levy after, after that, and so.
I understand that.
It was when Monica Burnett was the superintendent, because we're not gonna pay you one point nine, right? And then, so it started this big negotiation and basically, we had discussions about what's the district's number. Right, and we got to somewhere in the ballpark of. Four to, four to six thou- six hundred thousand dollars. And so, where kind of the sweet spot was, was their district would pay us four to five hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, that money would go, we even had a joint board, board meeting over it. Um, that money would go towards, uh, athletic facilities, specifically probably Art Fiker. And so, we've worked on developing some proposal. Uh, Joe West, who's our superintendent now, uh, had the contract drafted, he worked with his board on having the contract drafted. And so, um, we've discussed it, we, I brought it to the board. Got feedback from our legal counsel and so. They, you know, that's how we kind of got to where we are.
So basically, though, tied our hands that we don't have access to those dollars unless we, uh. Unless we. Go out for another project. I mean, they, 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 they already owe us those dollars, but we don't have access to the dollars. Until we, until we actually start going out after another project. And then put money towards another project, then they'll pay us what they already owe us, is that correct?
That's what their proposal is, yeah.
If, if I remember correctly Peggy, they wanted some assurance that it was gonna go to the high school and or the stadium. What's that? Yeah, well, that's what I said, they wanted assurance that it was gonna go here or the stadium and I remember. I don't even remember how many years ago it was at this point, the discussion for the amount came up because they said they received. A certain amount of pill dollars and as long as it went to a capital project, they could potentially use it. As opposed to multiple small payments.
Or cash reserves.
Or cash reserves, so. I think that's where that amount and kind of that agreement came from, I don't remember, I'm sure, but.
So essentially, we could force to change the wording that we don't have to start a project, that we want our money.
Oh, it's all negotiation. I mean, I doubt they'd be thrilled about it, but.
But they actually owed it at the time the building was built, this building.
Yeah.
Can we go back to the table and renegotiate?
I would say write what you want down and have the lawyers do it. Because otherwise, it's gonna be too bored sitting across from each other, arguing back and forth, which, you know, we could do too.
And as what was brought up, um, Kevin, there's, there's not a project that's gonna be listed for him.
No.
Like, probably looking at double that for anything, any measurable, good project worth going into and like. Mr. John said, I mean, fifty thousand just to get started. You know, for the architects and the design fees and all of that, so you're, we're gonna be in that much, just, just even to get to the starting point.
Well, and, and there again is if we do something like the, the ten payments. I mean, granted, yeah, I'm sure they'd be happy to do it, I would be too. But by the time you get the tenth payment with, you know, things going up at five, eight, nine percent a year.
Well, we started in twenty seventeen when we were running the bond, we'd be seven years into the tenure payment, so I, and that's really ideally what should have happened, best practice is you had. You had your agreement shored up before you started construction, I like Jason's idea, perhaps we propose, um, that the payments. For the payment be put into a line item. Capital improvements to Art Fiker Stadium, so that we're not, you know, saying, okay, we're just gonna take like one project and then figure out how to do that. I think that's the most practical way to do it.
Well, but if we have one project that it works out, that would also work too.
That would be great.
Yeah, we try that, I'm fine with it.
I'd support that.
No interest in beating them up, so. Alright guys, so that one's gonna be like a rented new. And the next thing on the list is the new PHS courses approved by the District Instructional Materials Committee.
So Prosser High School's proposing, um, several new courses for the coming school year. Most of them are CTE courses, uh, they're going to, uh, want to start a introduction of sports medicine and advanced sports medicine. So this would, um. Be the lead into like physical training program and kids being able to, um, learn how to, to train, how to do training. There's, you know, more to talk on that because it's the, you know, this, we've had a long, had a discussion about the fact the high school doesn't have a trainer. We are the only team in our league that doesn't have a trainer. Um, there's a lot of liability with head, head injury, a lot of liability with head injury, you're supposed to have a certified. Um, concussion specialist, we don't have that, so that means it goes to the referees to determine if a kid is gonna continue to compete.
We did for years.
Um, so, that, the idea of that is, it would be a person that with a split cost with the district and CTE. And CTE would pay for their half where they're teaching the classes in the district. If, if, uh, either way, we can still approve the courses, even if we don't, for, aren't able to proceed forward immediately. The STEM courses, um, are mostly around, you know, computer engineering. Um, computer science, engineer, introduction to engineering design, some of these are gonna be some of the. Kind of changes and adjustments they'll make, um, now that they're having some teaching changes at the high school, Mr. Smith has retired. Mr. Wood from the middle school will be going up and taking those courses and he's been teaching STEM down at the middle school. Um, business, they, the business operations, they've never had the course where the students, like the students that run the school store. They also like some diff- districts have like, you know, they make T-shirts and do all sorts of stuff, so that would be a course where they could run a business and learn how to run a business. And get credit for it. Um, that, right now, kids work and do all those things and, but don't get credit. Um, mathematics in the modern world is a, um, really a college math class for. Probably students that would be, not be likely going into a STEM career, so statistics is a class a lot of times. Um, like psychology, some of those kind of fields, pre-calculus or getting into calculus, those classes more like STEM fields. Math in a modern world is, it would be a college and high school credit, so that would be cool. We would be able to offer that for students, that would take us up to three math, college and high school math classes that we have here. And then, um, also wanted to offer Spanish for heritage speakers, um, cause we have a lot of students that speak Spanish. Very, and do that very well, but they've never been taught to, to really write. Read, you know, they may read Spanish, but write and write correctly in Spanish, so that's the idea behind that course. Those are the courses we have right now, I know I have a couple of courses that are gonna come from the middle school, uh, the middle school's courses, so these. Uh, the middle schools courses. So these are just in discussion. They'll be in um. In action items at the next meeting, because you guys need to approve those hopefully. And then the middle school's gonna bring a couple of courses for uh com- compressed six, seven math and a compressed seven, eight math. And that that will allow them to reintroduce algebra at the middle school. So the compressed six, seven and seven, eight will happen next year. Um, and then. It'll take a two years before algebra will be there because we won't have kids. We don't wanna skip classes. That's something we used to do. Really it has its issues. It's not what's best for kids. Um, and then probably down the road, we would only really offer compressed six, seven because the eighth grade curriculum is is very algebra-based. And I think the full year is probably the best for that. Um, Michael can talk more about that, but all those he hasn't. I sent him the form. I'm sure he's sending it to me soon. So that'll be in a. It'll be in a future a future board meeting before school's out at least because I have to bring my committee back together. Does anyone have any questions about any of the classes? I'm not sure. I thought maybe Rick was gonna be on here, but he might have went to sleep by now. I don't know.
No, I'm here.
So the world language. Class that'll be an additional Spanish class than what we currently are doing.
So those kids have to go like Spanish one, Spanish two, Spanish three, and they can go through Spanish four. But we have a lot of students that don't don't need Spanish one, maybe not even Spanish two, because a lot of Spanish one is learning. They're not, they're starting to write, but they're writing words, learning accents, but they're not doing like writing, writing, you know, big writing of Spanish. So this is to get. The oral so they can do the written, the written, the reading and the writing in Spanish.
So is that di- would that be different than Spanish three and four?
Yes, it is different because they already have this background knowledge of Spanish. They don't need to learn. All the words that you things you need to go if you go to the store or all the things you need to learn if you're at school. So that's how a lot of times how they are like. You go through themes and units. Oh, all the words around school and you learn different things like that. Um, yeah, because they know, they know, you know, verb tenses, they know, you know, the pronouns and all of that. So. A little bit different approach because kind of right now, either that or we decide we're gonna skip, like if they're strong, Spanish is strong. You know, a lot of times they'll go in and and the teacher will assess them. They really shouldn't be in Spanish one. Maybe they need to be in two or maybe in three, but that's also they are still missing some things when it comes to the writing and the reading because they've never been. Probably in an actual class, a top Spanish reading and writing.
I think this is great. Are we is there any plans to add any other classes at the middle school or high school for next year?
Um, well, the middle schools had, we've had, we had a recent resignation, Mr. Maya. Um, he was very hard to find in the first place. So that may, I mean, sometimes we have to. You know, have little metamorphosis depending on what we can find as far as staffing. They also lost their STEM teacher. So that's a big challenge. That program's been super popular. So I know Rick's, you know, he's gonna work really, we're gonna work really hard to find a new STEM teacher. Um, to replace Ryan. He'll be hard to replace. I think, yeah, I Michael didn't win the arm wrestle with Brian. I don't know, I guess on that one, but.
We didn't know that a study was taking place.
You can see that, sorry, too soon, too soon. Anyway, um, so for right now, because of those, those are became. Great big challenges because they're very hard to fill. Um, there's some unicorns out there, but it's hard. So. Um, we'll see. Right now, i- if we, right now, taking Spanish to middle school, we've talked about that. There's there's. But we don't really need to bring that course because we've had that course. It's not new. The challenge is is we we are not building our classes in Spanish in high school. So. Could it be a benefit to have Spanish for the kids? Sure. And maybe in the end that might work out, but I don't know. Um, it maybe that's what. They maybe can't ever find a STEM teacher and they choose maybe to hire a Spanish teacher. I don't know because they still need to offer electives for kids.
But still, if they have a language, two years of a language to graduate?
If if they don't choose the um career path, if they're going the college path, they need two years. If they choose a career path, they don't. Yeah, but we also are granting hundreds of credits on this on the STEM test. So students who have a language, doesn't matter what it is, we granted cred- credits in Mandarin. Um, did we have Russian just recently? Um, but we lots and lots of our students who are heritage speakers. Um, earn between one and four credits on the STEM test. And even our and our kids who have been in our Spanish program and they don't need to take the class because they get credit. So that's the other reason the demand is much lower. Um, just because. I mean, we can fulfill the need here. Our class is up here nominal at all.
And Spanish is the only language we offer.
Right now, it's the only language we offer. We used to have French, but the demand for that was pretty low. Um, but that teacher chose to take a position elsewhere. She was actually only teaching one or two French classes and the rest were. Like, you know, long classes because there the demand wasn't high. Um, Spanish is obviously the most practical language to turn the region that we live in. So. Yeah. So we've had a few resignations just recently that and changes that. Sometimes things have to change.
Mr. Paul, let anything you want to add?
Yes, I'd like to add on to the the sports med so that that those two courses would actually be taught by the trainer. And then the students would work with with the trainer in in sports med two after school and at games. And as Deanna said, we are the only school within the league that does not have a trainer. So it is, it will be a partnership between CTE. Athletics and and the district, but I I think it's a a very important program to have. Not just fro- from the training standpoint that we need for our athletes. But uh as the caps, another capstone portion of our health science program because right now we're limited to only. The twelve students that we can have in Health Hawks. And so this would allow uh another route for the juniors and seniors who are interested in. In the health sciences to to progress into their junior and senior year.
And then these kids too, you'd want them taking it like anatomy and physiology and stuff like that before they got into here.
Yes, those those are all prereqs. To get get in.
That's what I remembered.
I was just gonna say, similar to what what Rick just said, we would be splitting the Althoc program. We get double the kids in Althoc. Um, this we, there's also an opportunity for us to explore more college and high school courses. Add some more high-level courses to, depending on who we get as replacements for our teachers that are departing. Um, we would like to have some in in our science department.
Yeah, biology's, well, hopefully, um, one of our uh science is still a potential. Um, I'm hoping still for our history, history applications because we could be operating on a lot of college and high school history. Um, not all of our teacher, they have qualification have to meet. Science is the hardest to meet. And I actually believe we have a teacher that on paper, um, based on their requirements is qualified, but they have. Um, not approved for application so far. So but we we probably will be hiring a science teacher, so that will. Difference, but we, I just started working on staffing today. I mean, I need to talk.
Well, I think these are all great developments.
Yeah, they're great. Great courses.
More classes, the better.
Any other comments, guys?
Also say that when we talk about these courses, we again, we do a student-driven schedule, student-interest schedule. So. There are a lot of classes that we offer that don't actually make it into the schedule. Um, but just having the the opportunity to offer them. Um, is is a big deal in and of itself for the students can choose which classes make it into the schedule.
Any other comments, guys?
I would like to add one more thing, Andy, that the the engineering courses and the computer science courses. Both Ryan and Case will get additional project lead-the-way training funded through CTE to make sure that. That the they're successful in those courses.
I know I have a question about what Mr. Bailey said. So if we had, I think we did one trimester of drama. This year, so it's like fifty kids or a hundred kids signed up for it. Is it possible to do two trimesters of it? Would that work or would? Something that would have to be more future planning?
How many sections we need of everything else? So if you have a, you know, uh, for right now, Mr. Esti is our drama teacher, drama director. Uh, so he's also an English teacher, which is a required course for graduation. So you would choose if we have to. Have space in the required graduation course that takes precedence over the elected. You know, you kind of have to weigh it. Uh, depending on the size of the classes and and the need for student need.
I've heard so much great feedback about that class.
I actually took it last try.
Alright, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Philip. That takes us to action items and right off the bat, we have the Buck and Elizabeth songwriting and performance. And move to approve the signing, to sign in the consulting agreement with Paul and Elizabeth dearly. Alright, any questions, concerns? Alright, hearing done. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Next would be the vouchers. Is this vouchers a payroll or just vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
I'll second.
Alright, any questions or concerns? No, I can get all my questions answered. Thank you. Good?
I think I'm good.
Alright, hearing done. All in favor of approving the vouchers, please say aye. Alright, so the resolutions have to be, I'm sure I got the right one. Alright, so resolution zero, one dash two, three of the final acceptance. This has to be a roll call, roll call. Peggy?
Um, I will make a motion to approve resolution zero, one, twenty-three, certifying the Prosser High School replacement project is complete.
Second. Alright, I guess I got a bit ahead of myself on that one. So then the roll call will be Peggy?
Yes.
Genie? Jason? Yes. Lisa?
Nay.
And myself is yes. Alright, so that one passes. Then the next one is resolution zero, two dash two, three, building commission report.
I'll make a motion to uh approve resolution zero, two, twenty-three, accepting the building commission report. For the Prosser High School replacement project.
Okay, we have first, we have second.
Second, Andy.
Alright, this is a roll call as well. Peggy?
Yes.
Genie?
Well, uh, yes.
Jason? I'm gonna abstain. Okay. Lisa? And Andy, yes. Okay, that concludes our action items. Next will be uh business manager's report.
And so the enrollment report was attached and then also the financial reports. And the county did just give us a dated report. They had some numbers wrong. Which really is mostly with warrants outstanding, cash balance and whatnot. And that is not impacted on the report that I provided to you because those are revenue and expenses and there is more of that. But it's a little like you want to say, um, so they just provided those. Who's getting all that reconciled and up to date? Any questions? We are, we are very close to our five percent fund balance. And we are expecting, uh, you know, taxes come through in April and our other big payment. So that will help our fund balance. That's for the most part. I mean, we're for the most part, we're on target from where we expected to be, but it's still kind of that dangerously low.
Um, I've got a few questions. So much in here, I can't remember where it's all at. Well, I'll start with the ASB funds. So this is kind of a general question on the ASB. Oh, man. There, look, you were projected to have like a four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty thousand dollar ending fund balance. So it seems like we have this, we could continue incrementally go up. Is there a re- are we saving? That fund balance for a particular project or thing?
No. And so I actually was kind of talking to Katie Blair about that this year, that. And everything from the, and I don't know what the line about this, but like the official costs and and uniforms and. Just basic things to run a lot of the clubs and courts. And the last few years because of COVID, we did still, so we were still receiving some revenue and not spending. Likewise, there was also cuts in revenue, like we didn't have football games for people to come into. So anyways. Um, I had the conversation with her that we are kind of increasing over time and that's not the intention for ASB. ASB should. Be you get it in and you spend it every year. So with the students are fundraising and then they're spending it. And and that hasn't. And it hasn't been managed well in the last few years. And so we are going to be communicating more closely with the advisors of each of the clubs and each of the sports. And then her as the athletic director for all of the athletic part. And so that, you know, if. If one of the sports teams has a higher balance than say a club, you can't repurpose the money, like it stays within those. And so. All of the balances are kind of continuously, not all of them, but. The reason it's going up is because the balances in so many different clubs and sports are going up. So just working with them um. To use them in that year. And there was some residual from like the fifth to fifth grade camp. That was a pretty high balance, um, you know, thirty thousand, forty thousand. And that's gonna follow the class. I mean that, but yeah, overall, that's what you're seeing. And there are gonna be a lot of uniform distributions this year because we have been holding out for multiple years. So that's gonna be a fifteen, twenty thousand drop immediately. So, yeah, at least, if not more. And so we do anticipate, I I mean. I'm trying to get them to spend that down because that's the right thing. You know, and then going forward whenever we get it.
So my next question, um, and I did, I I did pull it up, but I think on the financial report from last year. Uh, school year, we spent about eight hundred thousand on extracurricular somewhere in that ballpark. And then I look at ASB, we spent seven hundred and almost eight hundred thousand on extracurricular. So we're spending. One point six million dollars on extracurricular activities. You know, half comes from fundraising, the other half comes from levy dollars, right? Have we looked at a way to, and this is a long term, and then I know you probably know where I'm going with this, but. How can we get a little, how can we change it from a fifty fifty to maybe like a sixty, forty, you know, more coming out of ASB? Long term. Versus levy?
Well, it would require more fundraising and getting more people through the game. So our biggest revenue source is people coming to basketball games, coming to football games, coming to volleyball. Anytime that someone has to pay to get into a game, that's our, that's the revenue that's used to cover the uniforms, the startup expenses, things like that. And the majority of the clubs, so like the curricular side, a lot of them is all fundraising. They don't really have startup. And concessions in the school store do go back to some of those clubs, but um, yeah, the majority of our revenue with ASB is fundraising. Individually or those major um. Like the the gate, the gated missions or athletic admissions. So. The problem is having people pay at the gate, the majority of people coming are still community members. So you're hitting them there, you're hitting them with the fundraisers, and then we're also having a levy that's hitting them too. So that's why I'm trying to push, like if we have these big tournaments and things where you're bringing outside people from other communities into our community. That's gonna increase our revenue without hurting our community members financially. Um, but it's really just shifting. It's shifting it from levy or not. And I was actually talking to one of the business managers that I think is Walla Walla. And their levy, they did the levy, so it's a hundred percent fees, fines and athletic fees. Like they don't, there's no fundraising. They don't do anything through ASB for any of that. It's a hundred percent funded through the levy dollars. And the community was very supportive of that, knowing those same individuals paying levy are no longer gonna have to dish out money constantly for their kids or. those same individuals paying levy are no longer gonna have to dish out money constantly for their kids or, you know, to go to the games, they don't charge admission, they don't do any of that. For our community, it might be something we wanna consider, but it has to be kind of an all or nothing. And so other than, um, like major conferences or something that maybe a group really wants to go to, but there would still be funds set aside for that. Otherwise, if we're shifting, then we lower levy or don't ask for those money and levy dollars, but that has to shift on the ASB, which means those clubs are gonna have to get out there for sports and hustle and really, you know, do a lot more fundraising, double their fundraising. That's a long way to answer, but that answer, but that's kind, that's where we're, that's where we are, the money has come from somewhere.
Um, my next question, can you explain, um, private money in the same account, ASB? Private money's in as revenue and private money's out as an expenditure?
So a six thousand account for ASB would be, um, like the, um, the penny, the mustings for musty pennies.
Pennies for patients, fundraising for causes.
Yeah, so when we bring money in and then we just pay it out. So it's really just a flow.
That's a quick turnover.
Yeah.
And I think you answered my other question, so I appreciate.
And I mean, how could answer any others or as we, you know, get ready for the presentation, um, you know, hopefully.
Gee, so with fundraising, one of the areas that we haven't really talked about perhaps is, uh, sponsorships. Even advertising and marketing. So we have a streaming network, one of the ideas behind that was, once we had that in place, we did have a CTE sports that did videos and things like that, they could actually do advertisements, so the people who were streaming it would actually see advertisements during it, intermissions or something. And we could sell that ad space, uh, much like they do on network television.
All right, guys, anything else? I'll leave this to you, Deanna.
Um, so I'm working with Kevin, we, our TK class is going strong at Ringer View. And Kevin would like to host a TK class at his building as well. So working on the plan to make that happen. I still have grant money left, I thought I didn't have that much, but I actually do, so I can buy all the classroom materials and stuff that he would need to start that up for next year. Um, we're working in partnership with the ESD and we're gonna put out a form that just says, are you interested in early learning for your three or four-year-old? And then the ESD, we're gonna work together to just determine which program each kid will go into, so that it, people aren't confused because try, people get confused between transitional kindergarten and it's a real kindergarten. And Ecap, well, really transitional kindergarten and Ecap are both preschool, they're, they're, they're preschool. But the names are different because they're funded differently and, and so we're trying to make it less confusing for parents. So that will go out, uh, there's debate, Kevin wants it to go out now, Jesse wants to wait, so, you know, the, that our wrestling match hasn't happened yet, so we'll see. It, it's ready.
Tell them why I want it to go out then.
Because you are, you plan ahead and you want to be prepared and he wants to make sure he can hire a good teacher.
Manager will ask whether enough kids to hire a new teacher, so I want to know if you have enough kids now and not wait until.
Yeah. And we did on this first round, when we did it, we had probably thirty kids that registered, but of those, four or five of them were too old, they didn't meet the age requirement. Another, um, no, they're in a little bit, I think, but we'll see. Another, um, another group of them were already in either Ecap, Inspire, another preschool. And, um, we took the, so once we got to through that, there was eighteen kids that, that we could take and eighteen kids that were there, but then since that time, we've had quite a few come in and say they wanna get their kids in the program, but we can't put them in there now, so. But we would start at the beginning of the year, so they would start school. It's similar to the way, the way we do kindergarten, you know, conferences that first while then kids come in. They try not to make it, and he's looking, probably looking at me like, oh no, more, more kids on the bus.
Another reason, another reason to get it out early, their parents can plan for next year, knowing that.
Yeah, because of daycare and everything, like if they're, or putting them in another preschool, so. So that'll be exciting, that'll be good. Um, the strategic plan invitations have gone out. Uh, my new assistant Jalissa's working on confirmations because we have some people we've heard back from and some we haven't, so, and then we're gonna mail out a paper, a paper invitation to everybody, but we wanna make sure that people we sent the invitation to actually got it, or I don't know if some of them did or didn't. Um, and then, um, I was so excited today, I just looked for like, just because I, I, I look every couple of days at our social worker job, let's see if anybody's applied. And there's never been anybody, and this morning, this morning, a lady applied who I think is qualified. And she has really good references and ratings, I sent off her application material to the counselor so they could look at it. So we might be, have someone, I'm, we're gonna, we'll have to do an interview. She and I have emailed back and forth because I did ask some clarified questions on her, sort of like what her licensing was and so I'm hoping there's enough. Yeah.
Sounds good.
And then, who any of the members want to end any interviews for that position?
All my counselors want to come, for the middle school and the high school, you're welcome as well.
Yeah, well, if, if you have, if you know now that you wanna participate, then we can reach out to you specifically.
I don't know anything about hiring our counselor, so I will decline.
Yeah. All right, Matt.
Okay, so, um, Deanna talked about strategic plan. Um, Amy had talked a little bit about, uh, budget, um, and levies and different funds. So start thinking about budget, um, the strategic plan should create some priorities. But it's important to start thinking out about the levy because we will have to run one in the near future. And then how we wanna budget and our budgetary priorities. And so, um, this is when we start gearing up to have those conversations and look at our fund balance. Um, we did send out communication about the balance calendar, uh, we did have interest, um, in that. Changing the board meeting dates, uh, we've been, Selena and I have been working on surveying people. Right now, we have a pretty good survey sample, but, um, it looks like Tuesday at six or Thursday at seven. Um, we're kind of waiting and trying to get more, more people to respond, uh, but that's kind of the initial. Uh, I'll be sending out information about the maintenance director interviews and who would like to participate in that. We have two finalist candidates. And then I will say, I'll echo what Noah said about our winter sports. Um, girls and boys basketball, boys and girls wrestling and swim, um, just excellent work. So, and then lastly, we have a PAC meeting this Friday at HMS. So if you have the opportunity to attend, um, it's always a really great time. I know that Peggy's been to a few of them. But it's meaningful to our parents and they usually have pretty good grub, so I think that they're doing tamales. Uh, six, six o'clock.
On Friday.
Yeah. So Eric Claris usually does a really good job of hosting them and they have a good turnout, so it's a pretty fun time.
Lots of people coming for the resource there, it'll be good. And you can go see the plan term if you haven't seen it, that's when I wanna see.
All right, good. All right, board reports. Peggy, got anything?
Very. Yes, I've got a couple of things. Uh, I was echoing again about the PAC meeting, I got my invitation today and it is Friday at six o'clock, it's always a good time, and, uh, they really do appreciate seeing members of the board attend. Uh, this last week, we took the Witstrand tour and boy, my, all of my children attended Witstrand and it is so nice to see what they're doing to that building. It's, it's gonna be just wonderful when it's completed. Uh, today I attended the, um, I zoomed into the meet, uh, the PETA meeting and it's the Mustang Business Competition, uh, Planning and we're working for, uh, towards a date for that competition, uh, the week of May eighth. Uh, last week, I had a great time on the whoosh, um, getting those kids ready for the, their whoosh presentations and we had a good board turnout for that. Uh, always a lot of fun, Dean and Kyla do a good job of pulling that all together. And I was paired up with, uh, Levi Russell and he's one of our students that, uh, graduated in two thousand seventeen and he actually went to Nationals three times during his high school year. And he won one time at Nationals, the first place at Nationals. Boy, that, he has so much knowledge that he was able to support, uh, support and give information to help the students with. Uh, it's just, it was very interesting, I always love going and helping out with that, so, uh, anyway, it's been a busy week. That's what I have.
All right, thank you, Jeannie.
Okay, uh, the ninth, I went to lunch with the trooper at the Heights, thank you, Jody, it was fun. Um, the kids were entertaining, some of the questions they asked, the state trooper we had there. And we got to play a game with all the kids, that was fun. Witstrand tour, I'm very happy for Kevin, his staff and the kids, that school's gonna rock. Right, we have a new executive director, Victoria Walker. Um, and then on March eighth, the girls, the young ladies we took to Washington DC are gonna come and present uh, to the board. Um, I won't be here because I'll be in the Caribbean and I feel very bad about it.
I bet.
Not. Um, I participated in history night, we had a wonderful board turnout. Uh, it's really entertaining, the length that some of these kids go to, it's phenomenal. Um, how well informed they are on what they're doing their project on. And I've received some comments from people that gotten invites to the strategic planning and are looking forward to it. That's it.
Jason? Well, I'll just kinda echo, echo what Jeannie and Peggy said, so I, I got to do the history thing, it was fun. The kids did a good job and was looking forward to doing it again next year, so that's all, thanks.
Lisa?
I thought history night was great, um, Ben, my husband was also asked to participate. And we watched the performances and we had a high school, I think just the one high school parent of Maggie Galbraith and Miriam Schloenacher, and they were outstanding. And then two middle school groups, the two girls that were each incredible, but the level of research um, and time they went in, it was so professional, the information was so well done. And I don't, do we, we don't fund them, there's not a budget, right? If they go on this Nationals, they have to do that quick turnaround fundraising and it would be nice if, of course, it would be nice to have everything funded, but to, if there's.
They fundraise. They, like when they start the whole surprise and then they're going to Nationals and we have to come up with money thing, but they do fundraise and we've helped them in the past.
Oh, that's, that's good. I would love to see as many kids as possible be able to participate in the program and, and go on, I think it's so wonderful. Um, I did have a question about the survey regarding board meeting changes, was that only posted on Facebook?
No.
I think they got an email.
You got it.
It was listed to the website and then it's recorded.
Okay.
For the QR code.
And to the city.
And we didn't offer Monday as a night, but that was on the, the last survey that went out, Monday took precedence, I think, over Thursday as an option. And that's not offered in this survey and I was wondering why not?
Um, I, I think the idea behind that was is that oftentimes there are adjustments that we're making on Monday morning. So if there's a concern when we post it on Friday and a board member has questions or would like to pull something, Monday's a pretty quick turnaround. To try and post that and get it out to everybody to say, here's, here are the adjustments that have been made. Um, obviously, if Monday is a date that the board would like to look at, um, we can explore that, put that out to the community too, is another round.
Um, we make changes on Tuesdays and Wednesdays with the meeting on Tuesdays as it is, I don't, I mean, I know Monday, no one's excited about a meeting on Monday night or coming off the weekend, but I, I would like to see the survey include Monday to see where it falls in. Um, the, the other thing I wanted to address, um, there's a statistic, um, released in the last few days, last couple of weeks, um, from the CDC regarding suicide rates with teenage girls, that it's risen sixty percent, um, cause suicide attempt in the, sixty percent in the last decade. And they also talk about ways to help that and to work with it, and they talk about school-based activities. Um, and there's so much information showing that school-based activities support that, and we had the Care Solist that we started and got one applicant for a social worker, so I think we're taking great steps. And I was wonder, wondering if other programs we could implement that we already have in place that we could increase, um, as a school-based activity. Like right now, we have Link Crew as one trimester, if there was interest, can we do that uh, as a year-round program? Um, because I think Link Crew is an opportunity to have, you know, mentoring and relationships, is it possible to do the middle school Link Crew program web? Um, and implement that to have that going at a younger age, things that we already have in place, we don't have to recreate that wheel, we don't have to, you know, hot, hire a new person necessarily, um, to do that or any other, you know, act, you know, activities that we could get in, you know, at a, at a low expense, that would be something that we could just get more activities and help, you know, work on emotional development and growth and activities.
I know that, um, previously Michael wanted to start web, but I, I don't think it was funded. Um, it does have some training.
Go to San Diego or.
Yeah.
International training.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I, I mean, I'm sure he'd be interested in that if that was an opportunity. I know they already do suicide prevention activities and things in the schools, but, um, honestly, that's not enough.
And more about, not necessarily directed about only suicide prevention information, but
Positive mental.
Positive mental health activities or, or any kind of enrichment and programming on a regular basis throughout the school year, so we can develop and grow positive relationships in the school district and the community.
I had one thing down under that, uh, I noticed, uh, talking about, um, how the middle school does a lot of the suicide prevention stuff. Um, when I was there at history night, I noticed you have a lot of signs up promoting mental health, uh, a new suicide hotline number. Um, Mr. Billy, this is kinda directed at you, I know you've been out for a few weeks, but I haven't seen any of that at the high school, is that something that you were hoping to admit later or is it just something that has?
Discussion and take a look at it.
Well, um, yeah, the, you did a great job bringing in Stu Cave. Um, and it seemed like when I was growing up, the, I'll call them motivational speakers um, or impact speakers, I think that might be a better phrase for them. I, I think that that was more of a regular practice that we would bring people in to speak about just different things. And, um, my wondering is, uh, you know, there are people out there that would talk about, you know, suicide awareness, prevention, uh, have compelling stories to tell, things like that, that maybe aren't so dark, but just give kids hope and, and resources and so um, that was a really great thing that we tried to leverage some ASB funds to pay for.
You can spend some ASB funds on that.
Yeah, yeah, and so that, um, I think that the, the conversation that we had tonight about the, um, the dogs and mental health care and Care Solist and I just think it's kinda like that safety and security program that we just start adding layers to it and building it and making that part of our conversation, say what funds can we leverage to have these, uh, conversations like Director Riley talked about.
It's good.
That's it, thank you.
All right. And I normally have almost nothing and wanna get out of here as quickly as possible. Uh, one I did wanna talk about was the Witstrand, we, we walked through, uh, actually I went, maybe when her walked through. And like I said before, if I hadn't have been in there half a dozen times over the years, you almost wouldn't even recognize the school, it's amazing. The other thing was history night, uh, we had what, four of us there, I think?
I think we might all.
I know I sat behind you for a little while. Um, I was late due to my work, so I didn't really have to do anything except watch, it's horrible. Um, and then the last thing was, uh, the state wrestling tournament was this last weekend and we had, I think, three kids. I think we had six or seven go, three place. And then the part nobody hears about is the coaches made some, uh, promises to the boys that if they had certain percentages show up and some other stuff, practices, that the coaches would wrestle. We had three coaches wrestle in two plays. So it's.
I didn't know the coaches wrestle, they wrestle, they have like that.
Cause they're open tournament.
And it was, it was for real, uh, groom was two and out, uh, AJ placed third and, uh, uh.
I think Andy wanted me to compete.
I did, no doubt.
And.
I'm by here. Still got it, yeah.
Lu, Lupe took second, um. But yeah, uh, if you happen to catch some of them, they're, they're doing a great job rebuilding the program and, and motivating the kids and they, they put their money where their mouth was, so.
Me and Maya Madrono, um, Maya Madrono was a, has been a two-time finalist, which, um, is hard as, hard as heck to do. And so just a shout out to him. Um, I mean, that's really remarkable to be on top of the stage for two years in a row. And what that amounts to is that if he transferred to any two-way school in the state, there'd only be one person, one two-way school that he could make varsity at. So just an exceptional athlete. He signed with Eastern Oregon University and, um, tough, tough kid.
Go Mounties.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I got. Anything else from anybody else? All right, guys, our, uh, next regular board meeting is the eighth, right here, six o'clock. Let's go home and have dinner.
Yeah, put on your. It's like, it feels like eleven degrees outside, ten degrees or something. There's nobody to start.